This is California Government Code Section 59453, subdivision of the Ralph M. Brown Act. California Government Code Section 54950, Series Resolution Number 202206 in the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. While this meeting will be physically open to the public, given the state of the emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19, members of the public may also participate and comment via application Zoom. Remote public comment is also available for the City Council meeting by emailing the city clerk at cityclerk@ci.series.ca.us. By 8:00 a.m. the date of the workshop, the clerk may read the written comments into the record and specifically request it to do so at the beginning of the email. Your written comment will be distributed to the City Council and kept on file as part of the official records of the meeting. And welcome everybody to a special meeting goal settings workshop today, Friday, March 18th, 2022, and I'll call this meeting to order. May we take the roll call, please?
Councilmember Casey. Councilmember Rhino. Councilmember Klein. Vice Mayor Silveira. And Mayor Lopez.
Here. Okay, for today, we will go over the presentation by our department heads, then go on to further discussion items. Counsel questions are welcome during the presentation and discussion items. If there are no questions from the council, we will continue. Citizens communication will come after the presentation to the council on matters included on the agenda. You have five minutes. Any items up for discussion will be brought back for further discussion. Alex? We can go ahead and open this up for general communications on the council on matters included on the agenda. Is anybody on Zoom? Okay, do they have their hands raised? Okay, they'll have an opportunity afterwards to speak as well. Mr. Warren, you'll be okay? Thank you. Alex?
We're just process, who are we doing the pledge or are we just gonna jump right in? Okay. All right, thank, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Diane. Well, first, as always, Diane put together all of this, so thank you, Diane.
And Christina, thank you.
Christina, yeah, so a lot of go, a lot of work goes in behind the scenes to have a workshop meeting like this, so thank you, Diane, for, for the hard work. There are, there's coffee, water, snacks for breakfast, so just the housekeeping items. It seems a little cold in here, so hopefully that warms up at some point. But we do have a lot to cover today, and we do have a timed agenda. While I, as we jump into this, while I don't want to limit the conversation of the council and the staff, we do have a lot to get through, so I will, I will do my best to try and keep the, the conversation moving, moving along according to time agenda. So apologize in advance if I seem like I'm interrupting, but that's in the interest of time and in the interest of trying to keep the, the conversation moving. So I'm gonna jump right in, and I think the first item we have to, to at least discuss this morning is the strategic plan. I think the council was provided a copy of that. That strategic plan is available on the website. And what, what today's opportunity is for the council to provide some input on the general plan, which, or not the general plan, I'm sorry, strategic plan, what, what you might have an interest in doing with the strategic plan, any modifications, any changes, that sort of thing. From, from the staff perspective, as I, as I spent, spent some time reviewing the strategic plan, there are some items and projects that, that have been accomplished. So we would, at least from the staff perspective, suggest and or recommend updating the strategic plan from, from the perspective of some of those projects being completed or being underway. Other than that, I think the, the document, it's fairly comprehensive and covered, I think, some important high-level topics. But again, we're, we're looking for some input from you as the council on what you might have an interest in doing, the plan. So I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor, or the council to, you know, start talking about the strategic plan. I will, just my last comment would be, at this point, we're not expecting in 15 minutes, as you'll see on the timed agenda, to get through the entire conversation related, related to this, since I've probably talked for about five minutes of it. But an option for the council is to provide us some input. We'll take that input and we'll update it again from the perspective of what we think might be completed on the strategic plan, potentially bring it back to the council at a, at a council meeting for additional conversation, discussion at a point at some time in the future. So I'll turn it back over to you as a council at this point.
Mic check. Yeah. I'd like to start off with Casey, you have any questions about the strategic plan?
Yeah, that, that's one of the items I have highlighted on my copy, and we've completed that design. There's significant amount of design for Lyons Park, Lower River Bluff is complete for the most part, so that, that particular item will, would, we'd recommend be updated.
Rhino? So you're saying that we will have an opportunity to bring it back?
Right, so what I'd, what I'd recommend at this point is some of those, some of those items, similar to what councilmember Silveira mentioned, that being updated will make those updates, we'll bring that back to a, to the council, a future council meeting for your consideration and adoption. Okay, so.
You go ahead, you're good to go.
Yeah, so yes, I mean, just, just to highlight some of those changes, number four, number five, under infrastructure, the, the surface water project is nearing completion, so we'd anticipate that item being updated regarding livable community. Item, for some reason, I've had item two and four highlighted, so I think you might anticipate some, some changes on those. But we'll, we'll also review at the staff level the rest of the document, and if we, we, if, if we think some of the other items need to be changed, we'll make that recommendation for your consideration. Okay, so seeing no other comments, I think we'll jump right into the agenda for today. Oh, I didn't go over the agenda for today, sorry about that. So first slide in the presentation has a, a basic outline of the day today. We, we just scratched off one of the items, strategic plan discussion. We'll be providing a financial overview for the council, going over the budget, budget schedule. We'll have presentations by, by the various departments. What you'll see is an overview of each department, some of the accomplishments of the department. Chief Wise, do you need to run? Or you'll see accomplishments of the departments and, and some of the challenges we have going forward. And those, those are, at least from my perspective, I tried not to filter those challenges and, and requests at this point that you'll be seeing from the department heads. I really wanted the council to, to get a feel for what, what the various department heads are thinking, and what they, what they see as their challenges as we move into the budget process. It's through that budget process that some of those requests will get filtered out, but I did want you as the council to get an unfiltered view of, of what the department heads are thinking. So that's what those will be. There'll be an opportunity for the council to talk about your priorities, what you'd like to see in the budget, and what your priorities are as the council. And then there'd be an opportunity at the end to go over some items that the council either wanted to get highlight for you, or get, get a little bit of input from you as the council, as well as an opportunity for you as council members to bring up issues, items that you, you want considered or to put forward as potential goals or priorities or projects. So it's kind of a highlight, highlight of the day. If there aren't any questions about that, I'll move on. Talked about the strategic plan, so I think with Tisha, we're gonna jump into financial overview and the budget schedule. I think as we, as we move forward in the budget process, I think it's important for some discussion about where we think we are financially. So, Latisha, as they say on the news, I'll hand it over to you, Latisha.
Okay, thank you. So just a quick financial overview, the, the audit for the 2021 fiscal year is nearing completion, and we hope to bring it to council on April, right, 11th? The first April meeting. Revenue for that year was down 438,000, while sales tax was, was up for both general sales tax and Measure H. The reduction in the cannabis development agreements happened that year, so that accounts for the decrease in revenue. Expenditures were also down, and that was due to the CARES Act funding that, that paid for a lot of police and fire salaries. At that time, that CARES Act allowed us to use that money to pay for those salaries without any exclusions, like the ARPA, for instance, you have to justify that at least 50% of their time is COVID-related. With the CARES Act, there was, there wasn't a need for justification. So with that, we added 1.9 million to the fund balance, which brought our reserves to 34.9%. For fiscal year 2122, our, our revenue and expenditure estimates appear to be on target. Sales taxes, again, streaming a little higher than we thought it would be. So we're in a good position right now.
Thank, thank you, Latisha. Any, anything else?
Go on.
Questions? I see councilmember Klein grabbing the mic, so.
My question will probably be quicker than his, not really a question, more like a comment. Our, our cell taxes are actually higher than we expected?
Yes.
Which is, I guess, everything with all the development that we have.
I assume that's from all the stimuli that people were receiving, you know?
Yeah, they're, they're spending money in, in our city, that's great. Mike, I'll hand it over to you.
Well, you said expenditures are down 2.7 million. Does that mean the expenditures that, that, that were down 2.7 next year is gonna come back into play?
Next year, they'll be, they won't, well, we got the credit from the CARES Act, so that's why our expenditures were down.
Correct.
Use that money.
But well, the CARES Act was taking place for this year, so that 2.7 million that we saved this year is going to reflect into next year?
We will spend the expenditures that we budgeted next year. We won't, it won't.
So the expenditures won't be down another 2.7?
Correct.
Okay, so that was, that, yeah, that was my question. So is that, and is that gonna be reflected in the 2223 budget?
The savings?
The expenditure? Okay.
It'll be the regular expenditure, won't have a credit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Latisha. I, I don't, I don't want to take credit for this, I guess, cliche, I've heard it elsewhere. My observation would be, we're, we're healthy. I think we're in a, in a good financial position, but we're not wealthy. So I think, I think you'll see that as we, as we approach the budget. I think you'll see that as we approach the budget. I think there may be some opportunities for maybe some one-time spending, but we, we, I think we need to be fairly conservative as we launch off into the budget process. Anything else, Latisha? The next slide is numbers. Did you want to run through the numbers?
That's just a overview of basically what I just covered in the previous slide, but in our projection format. So the second column, the 21, the 2021 fiscal year, you can see at the bottom, the reserves, 34% reserves. And then for this fiscal, current fiscal year, we're projected to have a 29% reserves.
Excellent, next slide, I think. Our councilmember Rhino?
I maybe need to put my glasses on, but in 2122, I see the fire regionalization contract, but not in 2020, 2021, or am I missing it? There's just a line.
Right, so the contract started in August. Anyone?
So there, so there wouldn't show, there wouldn't show anything in the, oh, I see, it was the previous budget year. All right, thank you.
So where does, where does the CARE Act funding show coming into play?
It was just a reduction in the salaries, most of it, so you can see that salaries from 1920, excuse me, to 2021 went down from 11 million to 8 million.
But it, but it doesn't show that, you know, like tax revenue, so we got a beginning balance, so it doesn't say in their CARE Act funding 1.09 million or whatever it was, so that doesn't come in as a revenue, it just put into the general fund?
It's put into the general, well, no, it's not put into the general fund, it's put into its own fund, and expenses from the general fund are moved out of the general fund into the CARES Act fund. We have to have it, we have to keep it separate.
So if you have to keep it separate, how come the CARES Act funding isn't separate in the budget where it shows it's came in that way?
Because it's not revenue into the, this is just general fund, what you're looking at. It's just general fund.
Okay.
Revenue didn't come into the general fund, it was placed into a separate fund, and expenditures from the general fund were moved to that fund.
Okay, and I see that, but you're showing a reduction in the salaries because of the CARE Act funding. But you're getting the reduction because of the CARE Act funding. Well, all I'm doing is, I'm looking at a balance sheet, trying to say, okay, where does this come from, where does this come from? And that's where I'm trying to say, okay, so in here, so it's safe to say that this, the salary difference was transferred into the CARE Act fund? Okay, thank you.
And, and sorry, I, I think Latisha was saying, saying that this is just the general fund, doesn't include the accounting in the CARES Act fund as well, so that, that's where that would appear.
Usually when we see these general fund future projections, we have it out about five years.
Usually five years.
Five years, and so are you saving that for the budget? Okay, because I'm curious, next year, if we go down significantly from 29% of the reserves?
Yeah, that'll, that'll be presented at the budget, but from the projections that we have projected out, it didn't go, I believe it goes to 27% next year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next slide. I think this is still you, Latisha.
Yes, so the fiscal constraints for this current fiscal year, as always, the, the community center deficit, current, current deficit, 1.7 million. So that's always a topic of discussion, how that's gonna be repaid. Have that discussion. Questions about it?
Where, where are we at right now?
It's, there's currently 1.7 million of deficit. The, the, we, there is no payment arrangement, you know, payback agreement. The general fund just kind of, at the end of the year.
It's absorbed by the general fund.
Roughly. Latisha, did you hear what councilmember said?
No, sorry.
I'm sorry, I was messing with this microphone. What was that answer again, that's my crazy question?
What was the question?
So is there a certain amount of year, it's per year that it's reflected from the general fund to pay back that, that debt?
Could, I mean, we could.
So has it been 1.00, whatever, million forever, and we haven't decided how to fix that yet?
We've been trying to fix it, I don't know, 17 years or something.
Yeah, this building was built in 2009.
Okay, I'll go to a question, I think that the former councilmember Condit always brought up, was that even though we have expenditures due on this building, that it never is truly reflected in the budget that we get, it does, it's really not shown in our general fund?
No, because it is a separate fund, we have a separate community center fund.
So when, so when we are looking at the projections, it's really not accurate because it's not showing what we owe on this building.
Center, correct.
Thank you.
The next bullet point is reserve balance target, and I, typically it's 18%, that, that the council has set as a reserve target, and as stated earlier, we're currently at 29% for the current, after the current fiscal year. Next is the fire apparatus repayment. We do have a 10-year repayment schedule for the fire apparatus that was purchased with a loan from the sewer fund. Currently, the balance is 2.1 million, and it is a annual payment made from the general fund, pay that off.
Question. So I, I know we have a 10-year repayment plan for a fire apparatus that, you know, we went out and bought new, new equipment, but is there also in place in the budget for apparatus replacement? So we don't get into this equation, because I think, Chief, correct me, if the target is to replace the apparatus in five years? Pardon? A 10-year replacement plan? So we bought all this equipment, what, two years ago? So two or three years ago. So that means the equipment we bought was four, four apparatuses total? Okay, so do we have a plan in place for future? Because in 10 years, there's gonna be four, four-piece equipment that are gonna be replaced. We're doing a repayment plan for 10 years, so we also need to have replacement plan in place along with repayment, so is that a part of the budget?
That, that I'm not sure of, that's usually taken care of by Public Works. I'm not sure if they have, have started saving, typically, for new apparatus.
Because I know in Public Works, I believe, or the, I know PD has a, has a plan in place, or they did, so I think we need to look at a, a plan in place for fire apparatus, so we're not borrowing money for water and sewer fund, you know, in 10 years, and, and be right back in the same boat we're in now.
If I, if I might, typically what you have is a fleet replacement plan, fleet replacement reserve. I did have a conversa, I was out at the yard earlier this week and chatting with the fleet, fleet manager, it sounded like there was a fleet replacement plan in place for most vehicles. At this point, I couldn't, I couldn't say whether or not that was in place for fire apparatus, but I can, we can certainly look into that and get back to the, to the council on the status of that reserve and replacement plan.
Would you please, because I know that the nine years that I spent on the council, there was never a plan in place for replacement, that's why they borrowed the monies from the Public Works to, to replace these equipment. So we need to, we need to look at how we can get a plan in place for the fire apparatus.
I would be in support of that. Be in support of that.
Mayor, I think Chief.
The only thing that we had in place, councilman Klein, was the strike team, I want to use this word right, revenue or leftover reimbursement. We were putting towards a vehicle replacement fund, I think it's '04, maybe, or 904, or something like that, rings a bell. But we were putting that revenue into that account for vehicle replacement, but there wasn't a, a vehicle replacement plan that specifically that we were funding for the exact apparatus on the predicted date that it would go out of service. We can develop that.
And, and I agree with you, because you were the fire chief when I was on the council the first time, and our conversations were to try to get that strike team money reimbursed into the fire department, so we'd have a plan in place. But previous before you were the chief, we had no plan in place at all. And so I know that you and me having the conversation, you know, it, you made it happen, okay, and I want to make sure that we do have that plan in place, and it stays there. Because to keep on borrowing money from the water sewer fund, Public Works, you know, we're never gonna get above water, or get out of it, so, thank you.
So we'll make note of that as an item we need some follow-up on. Thank you, councilmember Klein.
And then the final fiscal constraint recruitment and retention challenges. I think, I think we took, we may have taken care of the recruitment part with the salary increases, but the retention part, I think, you know, everyone else has salary increases as well, so that might hinder our retention.
Yeah, from an HR perspective, and I'm definitely not a, a HR professional, I think we are seeing challenges, I mean, still in the recruitment and, and, and retention, retention end as well, which it's a challenge to fill those vacancies when they come up, they, they affect us operationally. We get recent vacancy in the HR department, which will have, we're honestly scrambling a bit to, to backfill that position and find the, find the resources to staff that very important function, so we'll, we'll keep it staffed, we'll make sure we're addressing those HR issues, but it, it, it does become problematic when we do have those retention, retention challenges.
I believe that with the work we've done, for all of our employees and staff and department heads on down, it'll probably take a little while to see that reflected in the retention of employees. Employee will leave less if they make more, and it's a great working environment, I think that's been proven time and again. So it might take a little bit for us to understand, we did the work for, over the next three years, how it will help the retention of employee.
Just, just to follow up on that, it, it's a process, you're, you're absolutely right, it's a process, and like many of those processes, whatever the plural is, processes, they, they take time to really see the benefits and the impacts of. But we do recognize there are retention challenges. You're, you continue to be up, Latisha, sorry.
Okay, so now we move on to approval schedule. Departments have been instructed, it's time to start their budget, and their budget requests are due to us by April 8th. City manager will review them the week of the 20th. We hope to have a draft budget complete by May 6th. So we usually have a budget workshop, or we could do it at a regular meeting. I've thrown out a few potential dates, so it would be up to council to decide if we do a separate workshop, or have it at a regular council meeting, and then we hope to have it for council approval on the first June meeting.
Council, would you guys be interested in doing a workshop, then having a meeting? That might give us a lot of time. What did we do last year? What did we do last year? Did we just do a workshop? Did, did we do the same thing? Or did we just go to the, did a workshop?
Okay, so we will. Okay, so we will, uh, we have begun the effort to, to put together the budget for council's consideration. A lot of hours occur at the department head level, staff level to uh, go through the machinations of putting that document together. So we are busily doing that. And we'll be presenting that shortly to you. And, and we will, based on what we hear today, we will, and depending on the priorities, attempt to work in whatever those priorities are into the budget. That's really kind of the purpose, one of the main purposes of this conversation is to hear what the priorities are and, and try to accommodate those priorities into the budget within the, within the, the natural fiscal constraints of the budget. I once heard a city manager say that city managers are dream crushers. We, we, we try to accommodate the requests. We try to accommodate the department head requests. Uh, but sometimes we do, we do crush those dreams, really because of fiscal constraints, staff constraints, that sort of thing. But, um, anyway, I see Councilmember Klein, I think you're trying to jump in.
I just wait for you to, but you know, if we're going to have a budget workshop, i- if at all possible, can we get a copy of the budget that we'll be reviewing at least two weeks before prior to the workshop?
Uh, we will certainly try to accommodate.
I mean, a, a week would be fine, but you know, two weeks would be better. I just don't want it on Friday and we're having the bu- budget workshop on Monday. No, I'd like, like to at least get it minimum of one week early, two weeks if I can.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try to work with that request. I see Letitia writing down a note. Thank you, Councilmember Klein.
I'm out for May twelfth. Thought I'd throw that out there now.
Yeah, tagging along with the mic. If you guys come up with a kind of like a rough schedule that gives us the timeline where we actually get to get that two weeks out, hopefully that might work. Maybe propose that to us so that way we're at least given an opportunity to chime in. That way it won't be so constraint on, on you as well.
So we hope to, you know, have a draft budget complete by May sixth if we have the workshop on the eighteenth. Two weeks.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Got a date?
All right, we're about to launch into our first department, departmental presentation. This is your, your standard organizational chart. Um, I don't, I don't think I'm going to spend a lot of time on it. Reflects uh, at the top of the org chart, of course, citizens of series um, and the various departments. You, you will notice on the department and we can, I think you'll probably see it in the various department presentations. Um, a bit of kind of reassignment slash reorganization of some of the functions. I have moved recreation and the recreation function over to Public Works. Uh, seemed to make more sense to me since there was a connection between parks services provided by parks to move that over to Public Works seems to have been working well. Uh, the other recent reassignment slash reorg uh, has been the economic development function to the community development department. And, and I, I think, again, to develop a one-stop sort of shop uh, there with the economic development manager, working closely with the planning land use folks to to, to really pursue those economic development goals on behalf of the community. So did want to highlight that to you as the council, but um, I think you're, you're all familiar with, with the, the structure of the organization. So unless there are questions, we'll, we'll move on.
You ready?
Okay, so we're going to jump right in and I think that I see the chief on Zoom. So we're going to jump right into the police department and I'm going to hand it over to you, Chief. Go, go ahead.
Good morning, council and everybody. Can you guys hear me okay?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay, we can go to the next slide, which I think is our organizational chart. And that's pretty self-explanatory. If there's any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, we can get into the, the meat and potatoes of the presentation.
Mike's asking where court enforcement is on that chart. Somewhere around there.
It's not on the chart, but it's definitely within the series police department.
It's on there. Thank you. You can go ahead.
Okay. So we'll get into the twenty twenty-one successes. Again, all things being COVID and those things are starting to lift. As with twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one was a challenge navigating through the, the pandemic and all the, the challenges and different procedures and policies that we had to adhere to. We've had spikes. We had people come down with the virus, both in dispatch and patrol, just about everybody, but we were able to pull through and, and get through that. In May of twenty twenty-one, all of the supervisors and command staff, with the exception of, I believe, two sergeants, went to a team building workshop. That was a two and a half day endeavor to go over things, processes that we can improve, uh, delete and walk away with some tangible things that we can work on when we get back. We have done some of those. Uh, one of those I will talk about here shortly, which is the social media team or the public creation, public relations team that they wish to go by. Uh, one of the goals when I took over was to expand our social media footprint. And we were able to accomplish that out of some brainstorming ideas at the team building workshop. So, um, still some work going on with that, some things we want to implement, but it, it's a good starting point. Uh, the slide shows that we promoted or sent two sergeants to SLI. That is not correct. We had one sergeant go through. That was Sergeant Hudson. And for those of you who don't know, SLI is an eight-month intensive leadership course that I am volunteering all of the sergeants to go through. And it really puts them in line for future promotions. It gives them an in-depth look at all the different concepts of leadership and supervision. And it's a real stepping stone to be able to promote up through a police department uh, as they progress through their careers. So really excited about that. I think over the last three years, we've had three or four sergeants attend SLI, which is huge for the department. Moving on, we've established our public relations team. It is comprised of five officers, some dispatchers. It's overseen by Sergeant Gribel. And I don't know if many of you pay attention to our Instagram, Facebook page, but the content that they're putting out is, is really good. We're attracting some followers. And we're able to spread informative messages and also show the human side of the police department. You know, we wear badges and patches and guns and our dispatchers wear headphones, but we want people to understand that behind those headphones, behind those badge and patches are human beings who live lives very similar to those who follow us. So that, that's important to me. I think we've selected the right members for that team. They're creative. I'm not stepping on their creativity. I want them to create. But we did give them some parameters to abide by when posting content on our pages as they do represent the city and the department. This year, we were fortunate enough to promote two new sergeants, Sergeant Vera and Sergeant Nguyen Heis. These were due to retirements, so we have a new cadre of leadership in place. And all things succession planning, they are getting the experience that they need to promote if they so desire up the chain and being a first-line supervisor is that first step. The traffic unit went without a sergeant for quite some time after the retirement of Sergeant Coley. And we were able to put Sergeant Travis Hudson in that unit now and he has successfully completed the motor school. He's tapped to go to radar school now. And hopefully we can add a traffic officer to that unit and get them some more resources. Moving on to the grants, we were able to secure a couple of grants this year. Some grants for ticket riders and a couple of electric zero bikes, zero emission bikes. And if you guys see my head keep moving up, I'm sitting in the parking lot and I still get a little bit livery when people walk past my car, so forgive me for that as I sit in my car. Uh, what else have we done? We've implemented the stop data, which is mandated by legislation. Basically, we have to track everybody that we stop, driver, pedestrian, passenger, and collect data and we have to send that data to DOJ for reporting purposes uh, to make sure that we are not racially profiling in our city. Another success is we've implemented Dragon, naturally speaking, for law enforcement. And basically what that is is, is dictation software that allows the officers to dictate, talking to a microphone in their cars or at the P. They can also use that microphone to run license plates while they're out driving um, and do a number of other things. The beauty of this is it increases efficiency. Most people can talk faster than they can type. And if they type or dictate their reports in their cars, I believe it transfers inside if they come inside to finish up their reports. So it's kind of a seamless transition, yeah, for the officers to be able to get back out on the road. Uh, this is a positive and a negative at the same time, but we were able to successfully clear five homicide cases that we had in twenty twenty-one. And we were able to hire four officers, three dispatchers and one Eva officer. Next slide, please. Can you bring that down? There we go. Challenges, twenty twenty-two challenges. The finance director touched on this. Recruitment and retention will remain a challenge. Although we are starting to see interest from laterals and academy recruits that want to come to series police department. So that is trending in the right direction. And we hope that we can attract more officers, more dispatchers to our department. I think word of mouth is traveling around that series police department is a great place to come work, now earn a competitive wage and our benefits package is second to none. Uh, when people look at the pay scale, they may not realize that they don't have to pay so much out of pocket with our benefits plan as they do in other agencies. And that is very attractive to people who are a little longer in tooth in their career and understand the benefits of having a great benefits package. So we're starting to see that come to fruition as well. Uh, succession planning is going to continue to be a challenge. Um, in the next eighteen months, I'm losing at least three of my command staff uh, to retirement. They're all of retirement age. Uh, I do have the people in place to replace those key roles. Uh, the problem is I need people to replace those people to replace those people, if that makes sense. So recruitment and getting people hired is going to be a real high priority for us moving forward to make sure that we have enough resources to continue to do what we need to do in the city and, and get people trained up to move on. Uh, traffic enforcement is a challenge in our city. Uh, we get countless requests for extra patrol around school sites and neighborhoods. Speeding is probably one of the number one problems that we hear besides a few other things. And my goal is to soon add another full-time traffic officer to the traffic unit. That would bring them to two full-time traffic officers, one traffic sergeant and two reserve officers in that unit. Again, maintaining the patrol staffing levels to allow officers to move to other assignments. Assignments like traffic, K nine, FTO detectives, the drug task force. Uh, it's been my experience in when officers are able to go to other assignments, they get different experiences, which translates very well into their moving up in the department. But in order for us to do that, we have to have a full cadre of sworn and non-s sworn officers to be able to allow that movement to happen. Now, we're trending in the right direction. It's, it's going to take a little bit of time, but we're heading the right way. That's a beautiful segue into the implementation of a special enforcement unit. Our special investigations unit, that was a goal of mine. It was been a priority of the council when I took over. And prior to COVID, we were trending in the right direction. We were able, we're getting ready to toggle some, some switches to make that happen and then COVID hit. And uh, it's just been a series of people leaving and retirements and a number of reasons why we can't get that done, but it is still a priority of mine and the department's to establish that unit. Uh, with the fifty-two sworn officers that we have, we can make that happen. That was a plan all along. And then build and add to that as the budget allows. Uh, code enforcement and homelessness is a, a huge challenge and we hear that loud and clear from the police department. And we really need to reassess what currently works, what doesn't work and how we can make improvements to that unit, uh, all things efficient and maybe rework some of the standards that we have now. The unit does need a working supervisor. I want somebody who has code enforcement knowledge, extensive code enforcement knowledge to work in that unit. We've tried the sworn sergeant overseeing the unit and that just didn't work and I'm not willing to do that again. History has shown that that's not a great approach to attack this situation. So we will look to, hopefully the budget will support a code enforcement supervisor to lead that unit. It'll still have oversight by the police captain. But we're really looking forward to somebody who has the knowledge and skill sets to help us make mass improvements in the code enforcement unit. Our dispatch center operations, uh, we need to have eleven. We are trending in the right direction. Currently, we have three dispatchers in background. Two of them are lateral dispatchers. One is brand new. Uh, with that third, if everybody can make it through the background process, uh, we will be, we will have ten dispatchers and theirs, we have eleven, but that situation is a little bit complicated and I'm not going to touch on that, but, um, yeah, that, that's, that's all I'm going to say about that. The challenges are there. We are positioned to deal with those challenges and take them head on and continue to work and do the best that we can to keep moving the department forward. Next slide, please. Uh, budget needs. We're going to continue to improve and upgrade our technology. Uh, that can come in various different forms. Well, there's a, a need for a lot of high-tech, uh, digital forensic, anything that we can do to increase the efficiency and, uh, the work environment for the officers and the professional staff. We will seek to do that. So as long as the budget allows. Uh, as I spoke of already, the, we need a code enforcement supervisor. Uh, I, I was going to ask for two code enforcement officers, but that appears to have been addressed through ARPA spending plan and, um, this shows two code enforcement vehicles. We only need one. And, um, the C and T vehicle is going to be purchased by the ARPA funds. So that's not a issue. And this year, we have twenty-four hours of continued or perishable skills training that is mandated by post. We've brokered a deal with the Stanislaw County Sheriff's Office to do that. It's right in our backyard. I think it's to the tune of four hundred and seventy-five dollars per officer at about fifty officers. Rough math is about twenty-two, twenty-two thousand dollars. So will we asking for that in the budget as well? Uh, that will carry us for. Uh, that will carry us for another two years and give us an opportunity to plan and budget for that for the next two-year cycle. The building security project will be handled by opera funds, uh, milestone cameras and building improvements. Milestone cameras are separate from the Antelosite project that we are currently working on. Milestone cameras will be placed at various campuses throughout the city with the ability for us to monitor those cameras from any computer in the city and in our dispatch center. Uh, continual funding for succession planning. Again, SLI is huge. I'm a big proponent of SLI. Beyond that, uh, those who are up in the upper tiers of the mid-manager role, they want to go to um, truckers management school or the FBI academy or command college, you know, we need to allow for funds for that to happen. Uh, cause it just translates into better leadership and, and better management of the police department. The license plate readers at key intersections, again, that's going to be handled by ARPA funds. And the neighbors and cyber's rims upgrade is coming in at a tune of about $25,000. Those are different UCR or crime reporting to our California and national government. That is uh, mandatory by January of 2023, and I believe we have the funds already uh, needed for that. And that is all I have, I believe. I'm here to answer any questions if you have them.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Chief, when someone goes out from code enforcement or if it happens to be a weekend, if a police officer goes out on a street vendor, are they being cited or are they just being told that they need to move on?
No, the, from the daily stats that I see, uh, we are issuing more notices of violations, which is a warning or they're actually getting a citation. Now our police officers um, normally don't engage with street vendors, but from when code enforcement goes out or our CSOs go out, they're either getting a written warning or an actual citation.
So under that code, I don't recall for the admin that they get a warning. They don't just automatically get the first site, which is a hundred dollars.
I'm sorry, say that again, ma'am.
I, I thought when they first made contact that they don't get a warning, that they get the hundred dollar citation. Because I, I thought it had come up before that when Mr. Westbrook was here, that we found out it was the same individual that was dropping all the different vendors off. So warnings went out the window and they started just getting citations, a hundred dollar citation.
Okay, um, that's, that's news to me, but we can make that adjustment rather quickly.
Wait a second, we can't just make that adjustment just because of the one recommendation. I think there still has to be an officer discretion. So there, we have code enforcement who should be taking lead in this, having armed officers approaching vendors. But that's just my suggestion. Good opportunity for the council to chime in, but that's just my opinion, Ms. Rhino.
Um, I'm not sure how the code is written, if it allows for a warning or if it's an automatic $100 citation. I'm not sure.
Well, to my understanding, forgive me, I, I'm still trying to delve into the world of code enforcement to have a better understanding of it. Is when there's a violation, uh, normally they get a notice of violation, which is a, a warning to you have X amount of days to fix the violation. And, and then after that, uh, they get a citation if they don't fix the violation, if that makes sense. I was looking for that same uh, literature to see if we can go straight to a violation right off the, the, the bat. And I haven't found anything just yet.
Thank you, chief.
If I, if I might, I, I think if, if I understood the, the question, Councilmember Rhino, um, there was, it sounds like there was one particular, I guess, source slash vendor that was dropping folks off. Um, if we have the ability to cite that individual because we've given prior warning um, and the, the municipal code allows for that, I think we could certainly, certainly do that. Thanks, chief.
Are there any other questions?
I think we're good, chief. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you all. And uh, I can get out of this car, which is really hot now. The windows are starting to fog. Go get through security and jump on a plane. So uh, you guys have a wonderful day and thank you for this accommodation.
Thank you. Please be safe.
Thanks, chief. Uh, safe travels. So we are, if there aren't any other questions, the police department will move on to engineering services and Mr. Royal.
Good morning, council members and Mayor Javier. Uh, this is Sam Royal with the engineering department. Uh, as you can see from this picture, uh, we are short-staffed. That's definitely. Uh, we have a total of five uh, full-time uh, employees uh, for this division. Uh, uh, we have an associate engineer, engineer, which is myself. And then we have two assistant engineer, one engineering tech and uh, and, and admin secretary for us. So uh, as, as you're well aware, we, you know, with, with having a short uh, group, uh, we do various tasks uh, and multiple duties um, on a daily basis. Uh, you know, we go from traffic, uh, we have traffic engineering uh, projects that we're doing in-house, uh, enforcement permits that we're providing for the residents and for the developments. And um, we're also doing some engineering uh, review, uh, private developments. We also uh, go after granted uh, administration, uh, grant funding for these various, various project, projects within the city. Uh, we also have inspections uh, done by our staff uh, for private NCIP projects. Uh, we do our own CIP design in-house uh, and, and most of the projects. And then uh, we also project, uh, we have project programs and management. Could we move to this second place? All right. Engineering services accomplishments. Uh, we did hire one engineering tech uh, back in October and 2021. Uh, he's on board. He's, he's uh, he's doing a really good job for our division. Uh, we have reviewed and approved and affected 13 private projects uh, for this year. We have issued 93 encroachment permits uh, for uh, various utilities and uh, and other private properties. Uh, as far as constructed capital improvement projects, uh, we have multiple projects that are in, in, under construction right now. And also we are uh, working on, on few projects, uh, trying to get them out to bed and trying to get them uh, into construction here in this fiscal year. Hopefully, uh, one of them is a Morgan Road ATP project from Whitmore service road. Uh, the second one is the well 16 gag chamber project, uh, which we are introducing carbon uh, chambers to filter our water system because of the TTP treatment. And also we are uh, uh, working on a traffic signal optimization uh, project. We're trying to synchronize, synchronize some of the traffic signals along Whitmore corridor and also uh, along service corridor. Right now, uh, we are working on the ITS, which the uh, interconnect traffic signals synchronization phase three and four. It's under uh, construction right now and uh, everything is going per plan, which is really good. Uh, also the traffic signal improvement at Morgan service that uh, is being uh, constructed and it's ready to be energized. Uh, once we had the TID approval on it, uh, liquor road and central overlay project, that's where project got completed. And it's uh, going to council uh, on Monday night, the 28th for acceptance. And also the Whitmore Avenue lift station hatch replacement, uh, that hatch replacement, I met with the public works team. This is when Jeremy was still uh, uh, director, uh, that hatch was major concern because it, it, it was the surface of it was cracking and uh, they, they needed a major repair quickly. So we're trying to get uh, uh, a contractor on board here and, and trying to get it uh, fixed before we have any safety issues. Uh, I mean, plus that project was approved by city council uh, about a month, month ago, month and a half ago. Uh, but we're due to the uh, lead time on some of the materials, um, got pushed and, and we can't construct it in, in, in really an timely manner. But once we have that hatch in place, then we'll, we'll get going on it. Uh, River Bluff reservoir pump station project, uh, that's the three million gallon uh, water treatment uh, tank that we're building at the River Bluff. Uh, that construction is still underway. It's going to be, it's going to be going on until uh, I would say the end of the year. Uh, uh, the tank is almost uh, uh, the walls of the tanks almost up. And that now they're working on the flat surface, which is the, the top of that tank. Um, the line that runs uh, on Hatch Road was connected to our uh, our system, to our uh, city water system. So that's, that's all done. Uh, hopefully we could have that uh, that tank or the pump station up and running by year 2023. And this is part of the SRWA project. Uh, 2022 payment preservation project that's uh, we're working on that. Uh, we, we hopefully will, will get that uh, get that, get that project out bit soon. Next slide, please. Also part of the accomplishment is the wall 42 improvement that's on uh, Fifth uh, Street and uh, North. That project is almost completed. We're bringing on the generator to arrive. Uh, hopefully we'll have that uh, up, up and running in the, in the water system pretty soon here. Fire station technical training tower phase two, we are working with the fire department on that. Uh, we are starting into the design process. We're trying to finish up the project and get it out to bits uh, sometime uh, in, in a month or so. Traffic uh, school traffic safety and at various locations, that project was uh, completed and at the bid. We had the bids in and it's going to go to council for an award uh, this coming Monday, I mean the 20th, sorry. And then the last project that we're doing is the Maravillage sidewalk improvement project, which is part of the CDBG funding. And that project should be out to get it uh, by the end of the month. Right, next slide. The challenges, uh, we definitely need some staffing. Uh, we are, we want to hire an experienced staff for uh, for our department because uh, you know, trying to train new uh, fresh people out of school, it's, it's going to be a challenge because of the lack of uh, uh, we don't, we just don't have enough uh, uh, force or bodies that, that could do the training here in-house. So we're, we're looking for an experienced staff and that's going to be a challenge. Uh, Stanislav's regional water authority, uh, the SRWA, uh, that, that, uh, that's a big uh, that's a big challenge on our part because there's a lot of meeting that we, whether we're involved in. And there was a lot of coordination and a lot of decisions to be made. A river bluff uh, tank uh, and pump station, I just briefed up on that. That's, that's going out really well. That's a challenge. We have a weekly meetings. We have some issue. We have underground uh, utilities that are in the way of, of uh, some of the structures that we're building. So that's causing quite a few challenges, challenges on our part, trying to make decisions on the spot. So we, if, so we get a vote, all the, the uh, the delays. Um, stormwater master plan, we're uh, working on that. That's going up pretty well. Mitchell service interchange and right-of-way acquisition and construction funding, that's going to be a really major task here. As far as uh, the mayor knows exactly what we're going through as far as funding. We, we definitely, we're looking at $185 million to have that project funded, hopefully by the state or the Fed. I'm not sure exactly how we're going to proceed with that. We're almost at 95% completion as far as plans and specs. Um, and uh, we're, we're, we need the money for the right-of-way acquisitions to make this projects happen. So that's going to be a major challenge in our end. Uh, the ATP project was the active transportation plan. Uh, we're going to implement that project a little bit that uh, as, as part, you know, we're trying to go for funding to make uh, um, some of the areas, we, to improve some of the areas uh, to use, to use this uh, to use this uh, program. So hopefully we'll, we'll tackle those uh, this year and hopefully next year. Uh, we are, as, as everybody know, I mean, there are quite a few developments here in the cities happening. So that's a, it's, it's really rapid. Uh, we, we are going through a lot, lot of reviews, uh, lot of uh, comments and uh, a lot of developments going on in the city, which is really good. And uh, next slide, please. So uh, uh, as I said, uh, the needs are staffing. We did definitely need some experienced staff here in our division. Uh, continue to improve project delivery uh, on time. Uh, being short-staffed, we're, we're, we have challenges. There are some projects that we're putting aside, trying to accommodate the new developments with the planning uh, division. So that, that's uh, that's putting, that's putting a lot of stress on, on the short staff that we have. Uh, we are still continuing reviewing and inspecting new developments. Uh, as everybody know, East, uh, East Gate is going full blast right now and there's a lot of uh, effort and time for our engineering staff to attend to make sure everything is built per uh, city standards. Ongoing training, uh, we need to add more funds in the, in the training budget to, to, to have the staff uh, on hand. Um, attend some CAD classes, surveying, inspection and project management. Sustainability, succession planning and development structure, or we're, we're trying to work on that. Applying for state and federal grants and that, that's uh, that's also, we have uh, an consultant, a consultant on board that comes in and helps us with the grant funding. I think that's, that's all I have. Any questions?
Just from the council?
I got a couple.
Yes, sir.
Uh, traffic signal timing, uh, is that done in-house or I know a few years back, they contracted the Modesto city? So is that done in-house?
Uh, are we talking about the ITS projects or are we talking about the uh?
Well, just the, just the overall timing of all the traffic signals.
The, the timing optimization is the uh, we have hired a consultant to do the corridors or uh, and, and service road. So because tho- those were, are the only two corridors that uh, were not implemented. So we had to have that done.
Okay, uh, traffic signals at the south end of Mitchell Road. Uh, the new ones they put in, when are the, when are the new ones going to be operational and the uh, temporaries taken out?
Oh, the uh, for, for Walmart, uh, okay, we're going through, we're trying to, the contract is trying to finish up the center medians and send, once those are done, they, they're going to go ahead and start on a striping plan. And once that's done, uh, the signals could go up, uh, could be energized and up, up and running. So we're looking at by the end of this month, uh, Mr. Klein, to have that uh, operational.
That's great. Last thing is fire station technical training tower phase two. Uh, I know that's an engineering project, but uh, are you working with uh, local fires jurisdiction since they use that as a training center?
Well, we're working with the uh,
Looking at Chief Wise?
Yeah. I mean, we're, we're trying to, uh, what we're doing on it and Mr. Klein is trying to finish up the site, grade the site, put the foundation in and have the fire uh, department come in with their uh, containers. Basically it's a stackable containers that they're doing. Uh, that's how it's being built. So it's, it's, it's not like a normal structure. It's just these uh, 40-foot containers that are stacked together uh, up to three, you know, three stories high, but they need the foundation in order to support the, the weight of these containers.
So it's different than a training tower that's uh, over there in Modesto off of Carpenter? Completely different type of setup? Thank you.
I'd be happy to send you a rendering on that if you want. Okay.
Any more questions from the council?
Mayor, if I might, just a, a couple of comments on it, just on the Mitchell Service Road interchange project. Um, we're, we're at a good place regarding design, uh, almost at 95% design, which I really can't get more shovel-ready than that. Uh, the challenge will be uh, right-of-way acquisition funding and construction funding. Um, so we're, we're actively looking for grants.
So we're, we're actively looking for grants. We are in conversation with, I have to get the right agency. Remember what county I'm in, with Stan Cog regarding funding, but I think we have a lot of work to do to, to, to obtain that right-of-way funding and construction funding. It's not for lack of trying, but I just want to raise the issue and make sure the council's aware that we don't have right-of-way acquisition funding, we don't have construction funding, we are actively looking for, for that funding. So, that's all on that.
Sam, what's the actual cost at the moment to finish that project?
Based on the latest zooming that we've been having with the consultant, which is MV5 and Comley Horn for the project, they're at 95% complete. And the estimate that we put, that they put together for us would be about $185 million. And then, and then we need about 12 million for right-of-way.
So we're in the process of scheduling a meeting with Stan Cog staff to talk about those funding needs and, and engage their assistance to try and find funding for that. So I don't know that I have anything other, other than that and just wanted to make the council aware that we do have challenges in seeking funding for that project, but we're, we're trying.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments? And, and the, the way I understand the distinction between public works and engineering, engineering will design it, bid it out and, and get it built, hand it over to public works to maintain it. So for my, my simple mind, that's, that's kind of the way it works and the way I understand it. So anyway, I think we're gonna hand it off to Joey if there's no other council comments. Joey Chavez in Recreation.
Good morning, Mayor and council members. You see in our first slide, like, you know, Sam was saying, I can say for Recreation, we, we do have a small staff. But I'm blessed for the ones that we have. They do a lot of great work. Next slide, please. For our organize, organizing, organization chart, we are under public works. And that, you know, it is kind of a good fit because we do hand-in-hand work with them daily with facilities or the park issues because we are, you know, with facilities every day and, and in our parks issues every day. So it's, it's, it's been a great relationship since I've been here. It's probably daily calls that we're, we're making to them consistently every day on that, on subjects. I'm, I'm the Recreation Manager. We have one Recreation Supervisor, her name is Katie. We have an admin coordinator who's Tracy and then one add, Recreation Coordinator who's Crystal. I've started, I started in October. Katie has been here since August. And Tracy is, is also a newcomer. I, I wanna believe she started probably, I wanna say probably the beginning of November. So we kinda have three new staff within a seventh period that we're starting. So we're, Crystal has been here probably the longest, going on seven years. So we kinda lean back to her and try to pick her brain for how the process worked for the past years. As you see, we have facility rentals that are really high in this building and it's our main focus here. The outdoor rentals are really picking up now with the weather getting better. Events and programs. We, we have done a couple of few events, but there'll be more events and programming coming. Aquatics, we're tackling that. That's, that is starting to begin. We're working in lifeguard training that will start next month. Life, to be honest with you, aquatics is kind of a really, it's really stressful part of the season, you know, because it's, it's a lot of safety and concerns with this program. Me and Katie will be overseeing that, that program. And then our contract classes, which we have classes coming out throughout the day, majority on the evening and weekends, but we are bringing a lot more classes in. Not just indoor, indoor, but also outdoor class with sports camps and different camps from other organizations. Like I said, we have full, full-time staff. We have seven part-time staff. They're usually come in the afternoon to help with admin, taking calls and doing rentals. Also that those staff are here for the evenings when we have rentals here in the afternoons with the classes. With our summer camp staff, we'll have approximately about five of those. And then we're looking to beef up our aquatic staff to about 15. That will include life pool managers, assistant pool manager and just those, those, those staff members will just not be doing swim lessons, but also our rec swim program. So our swim lessons, to give a little background, will be going Monday through Thursday. There'll be 30-minute classes. And then our rec swim will run from 12, 12 to 4 as of, as of right now. Next slide, please. Our success. So, you know, like I said, we, we've only been here a seven months together as, as almost a full staff. They have opened all our virtual programs, classes offered to the community. COVID safety measures and protocols were in place. I believe they worked pretty well with the renters coming in, wearing their face masks. We had stations where, you know, they had hand sanitizer. So we really took, really looked after that. After classes were done, we go through and make sure we have staff wipe down tables, wipe down equipment just to keep the protocol. So, you know, we're at that time where we did have a little outbreak here with staff, but we kinda, a few of us were safe. So we were just rotating schedules and I think we, we're very successful keeping the building up because we didn't want to close because we know how the revenue is important. But like I said, the aquatics program is gonna be reopening, reopening. And we're excited about that. But it's just, I think for us as staff, that's one of our challenges too, is just really trying to, I think it's a very program that we have to have hands-on and very be hands-on and really strong at this program because it can, it can go south really fast if you, you're not on top of this. I really take pride in this program because there's a lot, like I said, there's a lot of safety and protocols. We gotta make sure our guard's at 100% because kids are at, at risk every time when they get into that pool. I, I take it very serious. Community center reopened to the public. Rentals and personal classes in the program resumed. Like I said, being hired as the manager in, in October. Our new supervisor, also Katie, started in September. Rehiring all our part-time staff that was laid off during our, during COVID, we're bringing them back. So I'm glad they're, they're back because they kinda know the system and we just feed off of them. And just, you know, going through the whole, how, how this building has ran. Rebuilding our relationships, getting our relationships back with the community, you know, because everybody's closed doors and just for us, especially for me and myself as a Katie, getting out to the public and meeting new, new people, meeting who the people we need to meet at the school districts. We do use their facilities. So building those partnerships. I think a lot of those partnerships came through at our trunk-or-treat event and our Christmas, opening of Christmas Tree Lane because we're involved with, with different people, seeing people there. Like I said, very successful trunk-or-treat. It was our first one. We had to put it up together probably less than a month, same as Christmas Tree Lane. I think those events were very well supported from council and from the community. It was just, it's, it's just very nice to see a lot of people coming out to, to these events. And I think it just makes us that it's, you know, if we had a great event, we just gotta make sure it's better the next time. And that's, that's our, that's our goal. Our number one goal is to serve the community and, and do the best that we can do for them. And awarded a few grants in the support with engineering and public works. So we're excited about moving those projects moving forward and those will be coming to you probably soon on, on that. We'll be talking to Sam for some of those programs. Rentals increases, what I've seen in the past, I, I believe they've been up, looking at the budgets, I think, you know, just looking at that. Just seeing how many people are, are using this facility. So we do have American Legion Hall. A lot of people kinda stay away from that because a lot of our, they, they love this building. They love next door, we call it the large assembly. That is our number one. Everyone wants that building. So when they don't have that, they go to American Legion or they use the small assembly. So we're, that's one of the things that I think goals for staff is trying to really burst up American Legion Hall and really advertise that and get that going. It is rented. Not saying it's not rented, but it is. But a lot of people look forward to using this facility. This facility to me, you know, I, I've been in recreation for 20-plus years. This is probably one of the best facilities I ever worked at. I, I tell everybody I'm working in the palace because they see it, it's a beautiful place and, and that's where we try to make sure that it's, the front is all clean. We're working on, on that. So it just, this is a really great facility that for a small community that has, because there's not a lot of communities that have something like this. Next slide, please. Our challenges with, with the events and opportunities that we're gonna be doing and adding new programs, current programs, new programs, our rental increases. We're hosting multiple city events being added with support, working hand-in-hand with the chamber. I think that, that's gonna be a great partnership working with them. We're trying to add in more events with them. Speaking to the city manager Alex, he would like to see more downtown events. So those are the, trying to, you know, you know, right now we're just still trying to get familiarized with this, with this community and seeing what the needs are. But one of the, by adding that to our budgets, to the budget, that's one of the positions I would like to add is a Recreation Coordinator. Not a supervisor, but a coordinator to help oversee other programming. Community center needs, we're looking at new carpeting, painting in multiple areas. A new wall panel, especially in a large assembly. We have talked about, talked to facilities and working out a game plan. Thinking about maybe towards the end of December, when it's kinda quiet, the beginning of, of January, shutting this facility down just for one week to see if there's nothing really going on and going around and painting the facility. Doing deans, just making sure we're up to good, just to keep this place up and down. So we're working out a plan right now with the supervisor who oversees that department. Just to keep this building up nice and clean, not just inside, but also the outside, working with public works. Keeping the maintain of the parking lot, shrubs and here, and then also across the street at the city hall. Budget constraints, you know, asking for that new coordinator, I think will help our department more just because of the need of new, new programs that we're gonna be providing. Also needed for more part-time staff for, for the rentals that we have with the seven that we have here. It is, it is a challenge because, you know, you know, they're just part-time. So they can just get up and leave time. So I know there's not incentives that we can give them. But for us, you know, for me, it's just by saying thank you or, you know, buying them lunch one day just to try to keep them involved and keep the morale. That, that goes along with. So I know we can't have them all the time. They can't have their whole career. There's a few of them that been here a long time. But it's, it's hard, you know, it's not easy to replace because they have the knowledge and, and they know how to do the settings and stuff. That's kind of a challenge for us. And then I think lastly, community, community partnerships, those, those are the ones that we need to continue doing with staff and just, I think that's a big role for Recreation because there's so many other partners out there that we can work with and develop new programming and what, and see what their needs are just to help us. It's a, it's a, you scratch my back, I scratch your back. So just getting out to the public and, and meeting new partnerships. And I think the one, the two that come across to me is, is building that relationship with the schools because we, we need their gyms. We, we need their pools and then also work with a chamber to work with our, with our programming. And that will do it. Any questions?
Questions from the council?
Did you ask for any of that in this recent round of ARPA fundings? I'm just, we, that was a two-hour mess of information. I just don't recall.
No, no, we didn't.
Okay. So I would hope that you had asked for that in, during this next round. That seems like an appropriate place to get some revenue from.
Joey, what current, what current rooms do we have now that we're, we're renting out to the public when it comes to meetings?
So the needs, so this one, the, the small assembly, large assembly. We have the meeting room upstairs, which Rotary uses every Friday. Great, great partnership with them. So they have a, every Friday for their, their weekly meetings, luncheons. And then we have the classroom next door, which we'll be having, will be up there today for our lunch.
Which is down here, right?
No, upstairs.
Stairs?
Yeah, it's called a classroom.
Oh, with the mirrors?
Yeah. And then also, no, that's the, the classroom. You'll see, you probably haven't seen the classroom. You'll see the classroom today. And then the mirror room is our dance room and ballet room, which is, that is going Monday through Friday and Saturdays, especially all-day Saturdays. Upstairs still, we still have a, there's another room. That's our art room. And then we have another room next to that, which right now we have a lot of our surplus items in. But downstairs, we have our, it's a senior lounge. What's our senior lounge will be, that will be up and running in May. So we're excited about that one. And then BVG does have their storage also in one of the rooms. And then we have the conference room. So conference room, meeting room, our, say our dance studio. Our art room's not being used at this moment, but during our summertime, that's, that's one of the programs we're working on right now. I believe our robotics class is in there on, on Saturdays and that's a pretty big class. And then I always say downstairs is rented out daily.
All the time.
Just, especially our conference room. Everybody wants to use the conference room, especially for internal. That's part of the room that's always available.
Okay. So, so we have a meeting room. We only have one actual meeting room upstairs, correct? Besides down here where we meet.
Yeah. So that meeting room, it's, we call it a meeting room, but, you know, internal uses that for like trainings, like public works.
Right, right.
Police will sometimes have their meetings in there. Police is usually in this building.
There's never been no, no request to, to rent out that meeting room.
No, the, so the, going back to that, that meeting room is rented out every weekend for birthday parties.
Okay.
And baby showers.
Nice. And what about during the week? Do we have any businesses locally that?
Yeah. So during the week, we do have that, but on Wednesdays BVG is up there, in there and also in this room too, and the large assembly.
Okay, nice. So it's, it's still being rented out. There's still a couple of days that it's not, but there's opportunities there for the public.
Yes, I, I wanna say about 95% of the time, this, all the rooms are being rented.
Well, that's great. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Joey. Mayor, any, a couple of comments. I think, I think we're, we're, I think we're seeing a trend in a, a need for staffing and additional staffing. And it's really those staffing levels that drive the city's ability to deliver services. So if there is, I think, I think we continue to look for efficiencies and try and find ways to do things differently, better. But bottom line is the staffing levels are what translate into service, service levels. If we don't have the staff to deliver If we don't have the staff to deliver the service, we can't deliver the service. But I'll take that one step further. If we don't have the funding to hire the staff, then we don't have the service low. So. Bit of a chicken and egg. But you, if we can afford it, you may see some requests at the upcoming budget for additional staffing. And again, just want to plant, plant the thought that those additional staff resources. Directly translate into increased level of services. Increased level of park maintenance, increased ability to deliver recreation programs to the community. Increased ability to hold special events, to draw folks to the downtown, create that sense of community. But again, I don't want to be the dream crusher, but it's all, all tracks back to revenues, how much funding is available. So just, just want to plant that thought with the council. Some of those requests for additional staff you may, may see in the upcoming budget. And if there's nothing else on recreation, just, just compliments to Joey for really building the recreation program. And rebuilding that program after. We seem to blame everything on COVID these days, but rebuilding those programs as a result of COVID that may have been eliminated. And do want to. I'll use a technical term, a little bit of backsies to recognize Sam and the work he's. Done and doing in the engineering department as well as public works. Really filling both of those roles to keep both of those functions moving. And and Sam, Sam has really kind of stepped up into those roles for the city to really keep. Keep things moving. So just want to recognize Sam and thank Sam for his hard work. So I think we're going to go to human resources department. And I, I think I'm presenting on this today because we have a vacancy in the department head position there. We are actively recruiting to fill that vacancy. I think we've had a number of applicants, so we are screening those applications. And we'll be scheduling interviews with those we think are the most qualified. So. Do you have that vacancy in the human resources director position? We are using a consultant to provide, provide the city with some high-level support. Consultant is on onsite a couple of days a week, but we also are using his services remotely. So it's kind of a combination of, of, of ways to fill, fill that vacancy. We also heard, kind of speaks to the retention issue. We also heard that our human resources technician will be leaving the city to take another job. So. We will have another vacancy to fill in, in the department that's tasked with filling those vacancies. So. That, that could create some challenges for us moving forward. We will be adjusting the hour of our part-time temporary employee in human resources. Increasing her hours to, to fill the vacancy or the void created by Jessica leaving. Shirley, our HR analyst, will also be out on leave soon. So yet another vacancy for a period of time that we'll need to manage our way through. So. Those, Shirley's being away, that HR technician vacancy, that department director vacancy. Could have a short-term impact on kind of, and could result in a short-term service gap in the HR function, but. Just want to highlight that for the council. So we do have some challenges in, in the HR, HR department. In terms of successes, if we could move to the next slide. Hired fifty-one employees, twenty-four full-time, twenty-seven part-time. And just for comparison purposes, last year in twenty twenty, we hired about twenty-nine full-time employees. So there's some, it's kind of consistent from year to year in terms of full-time employees. COVID nineteen has, has been somewhat all-consuming for the HR department. Every employee that that comes down with COVID has, has, it seems to, some interactions with HR. And then those other folks and with ancillary contact to those folks are also impacted. So. HR has been consumed, so to speak, by COVID. But it, but I think have managed through that well, well throughout, after the last year. All five MOUs were renegotiated. It's a fairly significant accomplish, accomplishment. And it seems like all at the same time. It's always a challenge when those, those agreements all come due at the same time. And those negotiations are all occurring at the, at the same time. So that's a fairly significant accomplishment for the department. The department implemented something called Spark Hire. It's a video-based interviewing platform. Candidates record their responses to interview questions. And then the, the panelists who are doing the interviews just watch the videos and rate the candidates. It's kind of a, I think, a COVID, a COVID response to not having folks have to come together and sit in a room and. Conduct interviews. So it's been fairly efficient for us. We kicked off a guest youth program. This program covers thirty hours of training pay. And we recently hired our, our first employee using that training program. Introduced the assigned nurse model for workers' comp claims. It's designed to reduce lost days by having a nurse aide available to assist employees. Who are having workers' comp issues. Transition thirty-five fire staff as that contract came into play. Significant workload, but I think the department. Managed through that transition to the contract, through to the contract. In terms of twenty twenty-two goals and challenges. I think we've heard at least from a couple of departments, succession planning will be important. As folks are reaching that retirement age, we need to think about. Who's on the bench to fill those spots? And we, I think we could definitely do, do more and do a better job as to how we're, we're approaching that transition. Of folks retiring out and moving qualified folks through those vacant positions. It never really seems to get the attention it should. And I think that could create challenges for the organization if we don't. Take a more formalized approach to that. I, I think I did mention I had the pleasure of being out at the, out at Waterworld. At, at the yard. If you haven't been to the yard and been in the Waterworld conference room, I'd suggest. Maybe just go visit, but I had the opportunity to meet with the supervisors there. And I think some of which are new supervisors. And, and one of the things I, I did hear from those folks was that they're interested in more training. More training to learn how to be supervisors. And they, they definitely want to, want to. Try to grow in that supervisory role. We do have access to training for our supervisors through a consortium that the city is a member of. So we will, we will be. Prioritizing that training for our new supervisors a little bit more, making sure they're aware of that opportunity. We want those new supervisors to be successful, so we want to make sure we're giving them the training opportunities to help them be successful. Improve upon our mandated compliance training. I think what we found recently is we're behind, we're, we're mandated, mandated by state law for all employees and supervisors. To have harassment and ethics training. I think what we've found recently is we're behind in that mandated training, so we need to get caught up. And we're in the process of doing that. And some, and it's not uncommon, some of our, our, our personnel rules and policies. Need to be updated, so we need to be going through a process to update our personnel rules, policies. Let's see, in terms of recruitments. They seem to be ongoing. We do have a number of positions to fill, so. Will, the department will continue to, to try and keep up with, with filling those vacant places. Positions. Police, as we heard from the police chief, police officer dispatcher positions are challenging to fill. But we will. Continue to, in our best effort to fill positions. Also need to, to look at the job descriptions for, for our employees and those job classifications to make sure. They're updated and, and really reflecting what those positions are doing. Munis implementation. And implementing new financial software. HR software, so we'll be working on that as well. Terms of budget needs, like other, like other departments. Need for either part-time HR technician or increasing temporary, temporary help. I think what our current situation in this particular department shows us is that. If we, if we have some turnover or if an employee is gone for whatever reason, for an extended leave. It presents some challenges for us. So there, there is potentially a need. In the HR department for. Additional staff if we want to continue to provide that high level of customer service to our internal customers. In the HR department, which is other city departments. So I think that's all I have for HR. I, I, I do, I will point out. I think, like I mentioned, we're using a consultant at this point to fill that director position on a, on a limited basis. That is under a contract. Within the city manager's contracting authority, city manager's contracting authority is twenty-five thousand dollars. I entered into a contract to provide those services. We are reaching, or we are close to that, to that dollar amount threshold. So if, if, if we want to continue to have HR director services, we'll need to, to enter, or the council will need to consider. Authorizing entering into an additional agreement. So we'll be presenting a contract. For additional funding to keep that consultant. To keep that consultant here and continue to receive those services. I guess the option is to not approve that contract, have to go out and look for another individual to provide that service. I will say it was a bit of a challenge to find Charlie, who extensive HR experience. Been around a long time and provided some, I think, some helpful insight, how we're. We were, we were approaching things and has helped us work through a couple of challenging HR issues already. So. You can expect to see that contract at the next, at the next council.
Mr. Klein?
Just a couple of questions on this. You know, when you're, when you're talking about the city manager's contract, I know that there's a limit. That the city manager can just arbitrarily go out and do a contract. You're, you're asking for just like a one-time extension where it wouldn't be a permanent. What I'm saying is you, you're looking for another, let's just say twenty thousand dollars to continue to use it temporarily, but it wouldn't raise your. Your ability up to forty-five?
No, this, the, the city manager's contracting authority is twenty-five thousand dollars. I would be recommending an additional probably forty thousand dollars. As a one-time, one-time expenditure to retain that consultant.
Then my next question is, with the temporary human resources you're utilizing, is it onsite or are they remotely?
He's onsite. What we've been, what we've been doing is two days a week. But in an attempt to not spend, spend as much money, we are trying to use him remotely as well, but he has been onsite. I thought it was important for him to be onsite for a period of time. But we are also using his services remotely. Just in, for the sake of efficiency and to be able to manage how much we're spending.
So what would the possibilities be to find somebody with the experience locally? From a hiring agency that we can have them locally and onsite? Is that a possibility?
It's, I guess just about anything's a possibility. I mean, that HR function is fairly specialized. And the, and the function, I think, at the level that, that, that I would, I, I think the, the organization needs. Probably not a lot of folks out there. It, it's. I mean, it's fairly complicated. It, it's not rocket science, but you need to know what you're doing when you're dealing with employees. And the range of issues that HR director deals with. So not. I wouldn't be comfortable in just hiring anyone. I have a certain comfort level because I, I know this individual. I've known him for a number of years. He's had experience being an HR director for a county, for a couple of other larger cities. So he's. Long story short, he knows what he's doing. And someone in that position really needs to know what they're doing.
I have a follow-up question to Mike's. So how far are we along with that recruitment process as far as still in that position?
We have about, we have a number of applications that we're screening at this point. I, I, I think. What did Charlie and I talk about? I mean, I, I'm, I think I'm going to be recommending about forty thousand dollars to extend that contract. That'll get us probably through two to three months. I would hope we'd have someone on board, you know, a couple of months at the outside.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else you, you have on that, on the human resources?
I don't know.
At this time, we can go ahead and move for our, our break. Fifteen-minute break.
Hello, everybody. All right, let's get ready to get this thing going. Everybody, everybody, please have a seat. We need to start. We need to get this thing started. Get yourself some coffee. Okay, we're back. Are we live? Okay. Next, we have Public Works.
Sam, I think that's you, right?
Yeah, unfortunately, yes, me.
Come on, Sam, it's a career growth opportunity.
Well, I didn't know what I was getting into, but here I am. Well, public works, the big, it's a big deal. It's a big department. It has various divisions. There are 61 employees at the at courtyard. There's 14 in water, 10 in wastewater, eight in parks, four in fleets, nine in facilities and 10 in streets. And also there are a couple of admins at the at the main building and also the director. So the vacancies. Are the water department needs, they have three vacancies in the wastewater has two vacancies in parks have three and a half vacancies. So they're definitely short staffed to begin with. Next slide, please.
I got to run that back again, sorry. That was a great practice run. Good job. Were they able to hear us? They just didn't see the screen, is that what it was? Okay, so no, they heard you, but.
Okay, sounds good. Next slide, please. All right. Successes for the department is six division completed, six division completed 5,233 customer service requests. During the year, park and streets crew responded to 393 customer service requests. Asset management program, they want to track track preventative maintenance, track costs and expenditures. Predict future replacement, continue to develop programs. We're also working to implement the new solid waste recycle program to three can system. It's been a struggle, like everyone knows, and we're trying to work with the residents and with the communities about this specific program. It's been a challenge. The the public works acquired property for well 22 treatment at Rockefeller. It's a it's a good facility for the water division to move it to. Also, we saw the head the head treatment, well head treatment for well for two wells, well 23 and 40. We installed well equipment for well 42 to become online this summer. And this is this this treatment site is on Fifth and North, just a few blocks away from here. We're also still dealing with the central slash regional water authority. We're also. Working on the groundwater sustain sustainability plan submitted January, January 28, 2022. This this has to do with the TID basin with the water, with the groundwater management for all wells within that basin. Successes and employee engagement. Next slide, please. The challenges for public courses, the COVID pandemic and employee absence. We're trying to certify water and wastewater staff shortages. This is this has been also a challenge. We have some, we need some certified employees to run a certain operation within the within the water and the wastewater. So we're going to be, we're going to have more. We're going to have more. Training to have these employees certified and and running the operations successfully for us. Staff shortage and retention, it seems to be a challenge. We are losing staff as as, you know. Trying to to hold them. To stay and trying to convince them this would be a good city to to stay and 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 and, you know, and and help out. And also we're having a challenge with aging equipments and tools and infrastructure. This is ongoing thing where we're trying to improvise on some equipments and 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 tools and we're trying to. Fix the depleted infrastructure that we have. We have quite a few projects, CFP projects that we're trying to deal with and and trying to fix. Continued vandalism to park play play equipment, sign irrigation, restrooms and plaques. That seems to be a a challenge, ongoing challenge for the past few months that I've been around the public works. I've been noticing more and more this of this vandalism issues that we've had throughout the city. And it's frustrating, to be honest with you. Garbage recycling, organic assembly bill mandates. We have an ongoing drought, which is a big challenge for the water department. The water quantities and quality also, it's been, you know, we do a lot of testing to make sure that the water is safe for the residents to have. And also the water for availability, assembly bill mandate increasingly challenging water quality mandates. And street sign lighting and sidewalk issues. So we have quite a few. Things to address within the city and and we're trying to tackle every. You know, every every issues that we have or every request that comes in on a daily basis and and it's it's. And we're being short staffed, that makes it really hard on us to to accommodate to all the requests at one time. So we're trying. we're trying our best to, uh, to do that. All right, uh, public needs, Public Works needs, uh, cost-saving through grants, uh, we're definitely applying for grants, uh, it does, uh, from the water side, from the, uh, solid waste, solid waste side and also the wastewater, uh, wastewater treatment side. So, we're, we're, we are, uh, we're definitely working on that. Uh, the water efficiency continue to, uh, for us is to continue to build the SCADA at, uh, Ochoa Park. So, once we have the Ochoa Park, uh, the sod or the, uh, the hydro seed and with the irrigation system on board, we have to have the SCADA system so we could control the, uh, the, the water usage. Complete and update wastewater discharge permits, uh, that's, that's, that's a must. We have to comply with our state board, uh, to do that. And also, manage the Valley Water Coalition and CB salt, uh, as it relates to nitrate and salt discharge to the groundwater basin. This is a mandate, uh, this is stated mandate that the program needs to treat the nitrate and salt before releasing into our, uh, storm basin. Uh, augment, uh, augment the waste discharge agreement with TID for the wastewater, uh, wastewater from the almond plant, power plant. This is, uh, this is an agreement that, what, that TID and the city, uh, worked together on, uh, uh, years ago, and we found out that TID is releasing more water into our wastewater treatment plant. So, we have to, uh, we have to negotiate that agreement with them and find out exactly why the additional base is, uh, being, being dumped into our facilities and into our wastewater treatment facilities for us to treat. So, we're working on that. Uh, also, the, uh, we're trying to complete the lift station rehab, the SCADA upgrades and abandon the school farm wastewater treatment, uh, pavement and wastewater treatment, pavement preservation, sorry about that. So, we have a lift stations rehab that we're trying to work on, on some of these CIP projects. We're also, uh, trying to upgrade our SCADA system. Our SCADA system is in bad shape and it needs to be upgraded. The, uh, technology is moving rapidly and our old systems can, cannot be upgraded anymore. And we have to move on and, and invest some money in the SCADA system. Uh, the, uh, we're also working on the, uh, abandoning the school farm, uh, which is onsite. And also, we are working on the wastewater treatment preservation, uh, project for, uh, uh, for the plant. We're trying to resurface their, uh, access, uh, roads within the plant itself. Uh, we want to continue to manage budget and expenditure as it relates to SRWA and continue to make improvement to the way, to the water infrastructure to prepare for surface water including and flushing program. This is, uh, the reason this is on this list is because we're gonna be introducing the surface water coming into our, uh, main water mains. So, in order for us to have, avoid any issues, we would like to clean the, make sure with all the water system that we have, uh, presently flushed continuously so we could avoid any problems when the surface water comes online. Next slide, please. All right, uh, also the needs, uh, it's a long list. I did not make this list, uh, Karen did this. So anyways, uh, we wanted to complete the surface water integration, uh, hydraulic modules. Uh, we have a consultant who's working on, uh, on, uh, on us for that. Uh, we would like to, uh, also complete the radi- radiological permit amendment and reporting for the state compliance. Uh, we'd like also move the water division staff, uh, to nineteen twenty-one Rockefeller, uh, satellite corp yard. This is where our water division is gonna be at. It's a new building that, uh, was purchased just recently when Jeremy was around. And also, we have challenges, uh, with the street signs, sidewalk repairs due to damages. And, uh, and manage the stormwater pollution prevention plan citywide. We'll also want, we're talking, we're also doing the stormwater infrastructure improvements. And, uh, one of the things, uh, we would like to comply with the DWR, which is the Department of Water Resource, on the new regulations that, uh, as they relate to the landscape management. And, uh, we continue to work with the GSA, which is the groundwater sustainability act. And also, the G, uh, GSP, which is the groundwater sustainability, sustainability program, uh, is to implement and manage the action and project. Uh, this is to monitor the wells within the TID basins, the level of the wells over the TID basins. And also, to complete the GSP, which is the, uh, uh, groundwater sustainability program, annual report by April first of two thousand twenty-two. I think this is all I have, and I would like to answer any questions. Hopefully, I can answer them.
Questions?
Got a couple?
Yes, sir.
Uh, wastewater discharge agreement with TID, the almond power plant, and is that the power plant that's on Crow's Landing Road by Winco Warehouse?
No, it's the, that's the facility, that's the hub station on Service and Morgan. So, it's, uh, the agreement was to, uh, to cool off their, uh, uh, the water was put in to cool off their treatment, to cool off their, uh, uh, power generator and all, and, and release that water to, uh, the wastewater plant, treatment plant.
So, with processing that, is it, is it, is, is special processing to go through it, or does it just go through our treatment plant?
No, it, it goes through the treatment plant. It, it, it seems like they're dumping more water than what was allowed or agreed upon.
Now, does that also get transferred to Turlock?
No, it doesn't. It stays, stays onsite.
So, it all gets processed in ours?
Correct.
So, we need a bigger facility, though?
Well, I, I think the amount of water that they're dumping is, is, is more than what's allowed, uh, based on the agreement. So, we're trying to negotiate with TID and find out exactly why that's happening. So, they're taking more water from the city trying to cool off their tower. And then, and then at the same time, they're, uh, adding more from the irrigation side. So, now, we have more flow coming into our wastewater treatment plant than what's, than what we agreed on.
So, are we gonna need to expand our treatment plant to accommodate?
No, I don't think so, Klein. I think that the facility has enough capacity to handle that.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
I have a follow-up question. So, they're, they're taking more than the contract allocates, is what you're saying?
Yes.
And then, they're also giving us back more than the contract allows?
Yes.
Does, that means that they're being charged, uh, per the contract X amount for the water use, but they're actually taking more than they should be taking?
Right, right.
Have you guys had a chance to determine how much water they have been taking since the contract started?
I, I have not. That's something that, that Karen and I are working on.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Well, follow-up on that then, and then how long has this been going on?
That's, I, I don't know the, the age of the agreement, Mr. Klein. It's something that, uh, this just was brought up when, uh, I first started. And it, uh, that's what Karen was asking me to follow up on. It seems like it was, was neglected for a while.
So, their increase has been quite a while?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I, I'll definitely find out exactly how many, you know, what was our limit and how much was exceeding and for how long they were doing it for, and then we'll try to negotiate, renegotiate the week with them.
Then, uh, obviously, you know, our relation with TID is important, trying to figure out a solution to why that happened.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, other questions?
I don't think so.
I, I think I mentioned earlier, I attended a supervisor's meeting of the Public Works staff earlier this week. Um, I definitely need to do more of that. Um, so, I'll be trying to find ways to connect with those folks and meet with those folks on a more regular basis.
Yeah, I, I just want to, uh, say one thing. This list was given, uh, to me by Karen. Uh, Karen knows, she's been a superintendent for, what, three years now? She knows the, uh, the facility more. I mean, she knows the programs more than I do. So, it's something that I, her and I are working on, some of the issues and, uh, trying to address what was, uh, on hold for a while and, and trying to move on on and, and, uh, and ti- tackle these, uh, these matters.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
All right, thank you, Mayor. If nothing else, on Public Works, um, I think we'll move over to IT Technology Services. Robert?
Morning, Council. I'll be a lot quicker than Sam. Um, the IT structure, as far as staffing goes, hasn't changed. It's myself, two senior admins and one, um, systems analyst. The two senior admins work as engineer-level, um, staff. They work on very complex stuff that could be real quick or could take weeks, months. Um, and then, uh, Mark's our analyst. He's kind of the on-the-road, does everything for everybody. Next slide. So, some of the successes we had, uh, we were able to refresh one-fifth of our fleet workstations. Um, and we're working on replacing half of the NBCs in the vehicles. Um, we're on target to complete both of those. And then, um, we continue to expand our mobility with, uh, the COVID epidemic. Prior to COVID, the city only had about, uh, eight laptops. And right now, we are verging on fifty, uh, mobility devices. So, it, it's increased our footprint quite a bit and definitely increased our work challenges. Uh, supporting remote staff is probably the absolute hardest thing we can do. And, uh, we are still working with, uh, the PD to expand our campus security camera infrastructure. We currently have, um, eight cameras going, live feeds of the campus into, uh, dispatch. Um, we'll be ready to start phase two of that next year. That's when it gets expensive. We, uh, I don't know if you remember, we suffered a catastrophic power outage November, uh, year before last. That outage, um, caused a chain of events in our battery backup in the data center, caused a failure in the, one of the back planes. After nine months of working with, um, the Schneider Electric, the vendor, after they replaced every single component in that main frame rack, they found that the one single point of failure in that rack went bad, so they ended up having to replace the entire thing. Tune of about four hundred thousand dollars. So, our support agreement paid for itself. Uh, so, now, we have a brand-new, hundred percent new battery backup in the data center. And, um, we continue to support PD and the other departments, uh, with some large projects, like the Dragon project that, uh, the chief spoke about. Um, and then, working with the departments to get technology needs for like the, uh, social media team, laptops, iPads, uh, cell phones, getting all that stuff going. Next slide. Uh, challenges. Uh, one of our biggest challenges is workspace. Um, I don't know if, I think you've all been through IT. Um, we have about twenty square feet to work on our, whatever we're working on, workstations, um, laptops, phones, servers. It's basically a desk. That's, that's all the room we have. Um, the other area where our work bench is, is actually a hallway, and it's virtually impossible to do anything there, um, because we have traffic come through. Uh, the chief has been kind enough to let us borrow some of the, uh, vacant upper floor to store all the boxes. Um, when we do the workstation refresh, we end up with over a hundred boxes. Between monitors, computers, parts, stands, um, plus whatever else we get that goes with those. So, um, we have to go upstairs. Well, when we get them, we have to take them all the way upstairs. We, then we get them one at a time. We bring them down and try to work on them in that twenty square feet that we have. So, it's, it's a challenge. Where we could be more efficient, we could do five or eight workstations at a time. We don't have the real estate to do that, so we have to do stuff one at a time. Um, the impact of the pandemic, um, everybody knows that. I don't have to elaborate too much. Um, with that slowing down, we are now in the process of recovering a lot of that mobile device technology that we have. Um, and we'll reassign it. Uh, it's gonna go to good use with PD, with all the training, with staff that may have, um, situations where they need to work remotely. We now have the capability to support staff to do all that. Uh, one of, another challenge we have had, uh, Council, you've experienced firsthand, is our lack of enterprise Wi-Fi. Um, prior to the pandemic, Wi-Fi was never considered a needed technology. So, it was implemented on a shoestring budget so that it was available. Um, with the pandemic and with the increase of mobile, uh, necessity, um, we requested ARPA funds to, to implement an enterprise-class Wi-Fi that will increase reliability and, um, functionality that we currently don't have with the, the budget Wi-Fi system that we have in place. Um, we're continuing, uh, in the workstation refresh, the next budget cycle will have a much smaller footprint. Uh, we will be smaller footprint, but, but probably the same cost. We'll be tackling the engineering workstations, uh, in the next fiscal plus the handful of remaining workstations that are, have yet to be upgraded. We will also continue to, uh, do the NBC refresh in the vehicles and repurpose the viable units that we have into like the SRO vehicles so that they will also have the capability to, um, leverage Dragon and the ticketing system and stuff while they're, um, on the campuses versus having to come back to the facility and use one of the shared workstations. And, um, we will, uh, be, we're submitting a request in ARPA funds to upgrade all of the Wi-Fi units in the vehicles. Our current, um, they're called cradle points. Our current cellular technology in the vehicles is 4G. And, uh, Verizon's doing their best to get everybody out of the 4G into the 5G market. So, it's, it's a good time for us to start that, that transition. And we, um, have, we're, we're getting to a point where we're expanding our technology service requirements. Um, so, we're hoping to possibly get another staff member. With the two engineer levels, I'd like to get another staff level. A staff-level person would, um, help in managing the audio/video equipment, uh, help in managing, uh, some of the technology appliances that are in the, uh, Public Works arena. Um, also, help with software-level support that we currently don't have. Next slide. So, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three needs, um, workspace, staffing, um, the enterprise Wi-Fi, uh, the NBC refresh, um, staffing in order for us to dedicate staff to those NBC workstations and the staff workstations. Um, we could greatly use additional staff to support those. And then, um, continued response from mobility needs, uh, would be budgeting a small amount of mobility needs in case there are other challenges, uh, with COVID, uh, since it's still up in the air. And then, um, the citywide camera infrastructure will be in need.
That's it. Um, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Just that we're talking about citywide camera infrastructure. Is that something that your department will be taking care of when it comes to maintenance and troubleshooting and all that sort of activity?
That's, so, the reason it languished for so long was because they have a third party come in and do it. The cost was always prohibitive, so it never happened. So, we worked with Captain Crane and the chief and said, you know, hey, let us, let us do some proof of concept. So, over a year, we looked at different cameras. We looked at different technology. Um, and we were able to do it for like a twentieth of the cost that the vendors were gonna do it. So, as long as it's on this campus and as long as it's attached to our buildings and our network, we will be supporting PD for that.
And once you do receive these cameras, I mean, they go, they have about a one-year warranty? Or is that, is that the case or, or not?
Most of them are about a year.
I mean, we have a, I mean, if there's any failed cameras, parts or anything like that, but you'll be able to get the, the replacement, right?
Right. Yeah, that and as, as, technology is always a fighting battle. One side upgrades, then the other side's left hanging or, or stops functioning.
Longer supported by the factory situation.
Right. So, yeah, like milestone's gonna be our software platform on the back end. They're very picky on the cameras that, that work. So, we can get cameras that'll work, but you might not get the PDZ functionality. You may not get the zoom. You may not get audio. So, yeah, that's, that's a constantly evolving technology. There will be a lifecycle attached to those cameras, just like there are computers.
Um, have you identified any space available in the police department where you could possibly expand to?
There's a lot of vacant areas, but that's- There's a lot of vacant areas, but that's, that'd be up to the chief and the city manager to.
You guys, I was just curious. So, so we did, make sure I'm not wrong. We approved some Wi-Fi upgrades.
It was on there, yes.
So that, that I believe is important because I know at City Hall, it's
Yeah. One of the issues with our Wi-Fi is it doesn't do roaming. So whatever access point you connect to is going to hold on to your device for dear life.
Okay, there you go.
So if you, if you do go from here or like to City Hall.
Won't get disconnected anymore? That would be the, that would be the goal?
If they can see this one at all, it's going to hold on to that one regardless of whether or not you get connected.
So then you'll get a bad feed if you go all the way. Oh, wow.
So yeah, it doesn't hand off. So an enterprise Wi-Fi will let you go to anywhere like a cell tower would let you, it'll hand you off. Other questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Robert. IT tends to operate in the background and it doesn't really become an issue until it breaks. Thankfully, it doesn't break very often and yeah, so thanks, Robert. Onto community development. Christopher, all yours.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Council. We've got a photo of our happy little department. Next slide, please. This is the setup that we've got. We've got an administrative secretary, building permit technician, the economic development manager and senior planner. We also have in the budget vacant part-time housing position. Next slide, please. Talk about the successes. We have entitled, processed or constructed a number of new businesses. We believe that these will increase the sales tax revenue that the city receives. So it's, it's an exciting time. Things seem to be booming pretty well. The, the cost of living in series is going up however, so it's, it's kind of a constant struggle of getting a lot of commercial, but house prices are going up. So we need to try to remember the full range of development. And going forward, we'll probably see a lot more residential development. We've got several subdivisions that are coming on board. So next slide, please. In the past year, we issued over 800 building permits. A lot of these are for improvements to existing homes such as pools, solar panels, HVAC systems, those sort of things. Not that many new single-family residences, however, as I mentioned, we've titled some subdivisions or we're in the process of doing that. So I think in the next couple of years, we'll see an uptick of single-family residents as well as multifamily that will be coming to our city. Slide, please. Last year, we've entitled, processed entitlements for 38 multifamily residential units and a total of, or we're in the process with a total of 163 single-family residences. So that includes Cambridge Estates Phase Two, Olive Villas and Whitmore Ranch. Whitmore Ranch Phase Two is also coming on board. So that number will keep going up. Some other successes that I'd like to mention on the next slide are digital in nature. So we have Acela, which is a software that we use to track building permits. And in the past, someone would come to the counter and they'd have to fill out a paper form and give that to our building permit technician who would then enter all the data into Acela, the software platform. We contract with the county to do building plan check review and building, building inspections. So they're, they're still helping us with that a lot. And the thing that changed in the last couple of months is in December, we started accepting digital building permit applications. So people can go onto our website, click a link, it will take them to a portal, website that they can enter in their information, upload documents. Those are, it streamlines the process because it means that the people at the county who are helping us with the plan check review and look at it sooner. It's cutting back on the amount of paper that we're having to process. So it's, it's a big win, I think. Another thing that we've been working on is we've never had before our zoning map and our general plan on our website in an interactive digital format. It's always been a PDF. PDFs are good, but it's, it's really looking at a picture. You can't click on it to learn more information. Now we can. We have a portal on our website that you can click. It opens up the general plan. People can click on it and it'll tell you more information. As we add more information to that platform, we'll have the zoning map. Our goal is to have information such as what planned community that parcel is in. And hopefully a lot of other information that will help people make a decision about whether or not they certain part of the city or if they're doing research. We get a lot of questions, even public records requests on things like what zone is this? I think that a lot of our zoning and because we have so many specific plans and planning communities, it can be difficult for developers or regular folks to find out information. So we get a lot of information requests. So we're spending time answering those questions. Hopefully in the future, we'll be able to point people to this map. As it grows, as we add more information to it, it will answer a lot of the questions. So far, we, we have our general plan on that map. Next slide, please. Thank you. So here are some challenges that we're facing. Before 2009, there were, the department was larger. There were several planners. And there has not been a change. It's remained constant since that recession. So there's any, since we're seeing an increase in activity with applications that we're processing, this may impact some of the processing times. So we're doing our best to have a quick turnaround. We want to be business friendly with development as far as, you know, bringing in tax dollars and helping people make their dreams come true as they follow our many regulations and ordinances. And we're just doing it on kind of a, a small staff. So that's one challenge. We're going to see an anticipated increase in commercial applications. Since the Super Walmart came in, a lot of other developers throughout the city, not, not just in the Mitchell Ranch area or the Series Gateway, but those are big, those are big ones. Even areas outside of that are asking us, what, what will it take for me to develop this type of use? A lot of commercial interest is in the city right now. So it's a good thing. It's just, it's a good problem to have. It's just that we're, it, it keeps us, it's keeping us on our toes because we've got that small staff. Also, we're supporting the code enforcement efforts. And when there's a complaint, oftentimes we need to do some research, find out what our ordinance, what our municipal code says, insist in that way with code enforcement. I've gone out with code enforcement to meet with people, try to get them back into the client and reduce maps to help in that effort as well. Next slide, please. Some of the big projects that we're looking at, working on in the near future, these are some aggressive goals we're putting together. We need to work, start working on public facility fees next study. Budget for that is grant funded. The last time it was updated was in 2010. So it's due for rehaul. Also, our housing element update, part of our general plan dealing with housing. The state requires us to periodically update that and that will, that's also grant funded. Few years ago, the city council adopted a whole food vendor pilot program in part of our municipal code. And it limited a number of food trucks or mobile food vendors to 10. We've seen that that program has been on the whole successful for those small businesses. And so we'd like to revisit that at some future point with the city council to see what direction you'd like us to take. That was a pilot program. It's been a few years. So, you know, pilot programs need to come to an end at some point. Whether that allows more, keep it the same, something, do away with it. It's up to the council, but we'd like to have that conversation soon because there are other businesses that would also like that opportunity. So we just need to find out what the will of the council is. And then a very major project that's on the horizon is the Copper Trails Master Plan. This is over 500 acres on the south side of series. It's south of Service Road, west of Highway 99. And I believe east of Blaker and it's, and it's more TID lateral. So it's a very large area. It, it contains Central Valley High and another elementary school and lots of orchards and some homes. And our general plan was already updated to allow for development. The east portion of that site is regional commercial. There are other areas in the site that are high density residential, medium and low density. Just calculating the possibilities of new population growth from this area. It's in at least the teens and the percentage of increase in our population. So it'd be a big deal for series to have this project move forward. They've applied, they've submitted their application. We're currently working on our process to hire consultant to help us with the environmental impact report for that project. It's currently outside the boundaries of the city limits. So an annexation would need to be part of that project as well. And we've talked with LAFCO and so we're, we're figuring all that out and we, we know that it's going to be a major project that will take a lot of staff time. Next slide, please. So some of the things that we're looking at are, and I think some other departments have mentioned this before, is success and planning. We've got, I like to think about it like we've got a few new people in our, in our department, but we've got some veterans that have a lot of experience and the complexity of, of planning is high. There's a lot of, there's a lot of different documents that people need to know about. And that, that institutional knowledge is very important. So we'd like to build in some succession, succession planning for that. Here are our thoughts. So we, I mentioned earlier that there's a part-time housing position that's funded in our, in our budget. The, the idea would be to create assistant planner role that will be cool. Planning and housing, it would help us bring back some programs like Time Home Buyer Program. Help us deal with a lot of the counter work, planning questions and some of the easier staff reports because we have some of these big projects coming on board. Best to have some of the, fight and conquer some of those roles. And the second would be a reclassification of a senior planning position to a city planner position. Similar to other cities in our area like Patterson, they've got the same model for their development department. And again, this would expand the role. It would, we'd get more out of it and it would be best for succession planning. So those are, those are the things that we're working on. Couple of things that I wanted to add. We've got a lot of old plans in the large printed kind of rolls. And we need to scan those in and make as much as we can digital. So our building technician is, that's, that's a side project that is being worked on right now. I can see the mountain of plans slowly shrink. And so there is progress being made and that's exciting. And lastly, we've got a new terminal that we put at our front counter. When people come in with a question, they can see the monitor for typing things in. We can pull up map. We can pull up the municipal code and show them in real time. This, this is what your setback is and et cetera. It's been very helpful. People have liked it and I, I think that will continue. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to look into that.
So right now, we have 99 solar panel projects. Are there any other requests for solar panels in the city besides what's considering placed now? And is it like, is it something that a lot of residents are asking about?
Yes, there are a lot of residents that, that want to put solar panels on their roofs. It's constant. So I, I think you, you're, we're getting multiple per week.
Are you having a difficult time processing this because of your short staff? Because I could imagine that just mounts on top of it.
Yeah, it's, it's, everything's always a struggle, but I think we do a lot with our small staff. I think that we could do more if we had like one more position. That would, that would help a lot.
Well, currently we use the county for building permits and plan check review.
Correct.
And that's working out for you guys now at the moment? I mean, is there any possible way in the future?
Yeah.
Is it possible if we had to hire somebody else to do that for us or is that just a good relationship? It sounds like it's working.
It's been a pretty good relationship. There, there have been a couple of hiccups, just getting everyone on the same page as far as when we sign off a final occupancy certificate of occupancy, making sure that that happens with everyone aware of all the requirements that we're looking at. But we've, we've made some adjustments and we have a great relationship with the county and it's, it's working out. And I think we're probably saving some money, but in the future, you know, years from now, we may want to consider having an in-house building inspection. It would give us a little bit more control over how, how we want to go about. Having the county help us is very helpful. They've got a lot of expertise. And because there are so many employees working on the building side of things, they've got their own, you know, structure. The, the building side of it is, is as far as succession planning goes, I think, I feel like that's already pretty strong.
You were talking about the general plan being online, but you said it's not fully online or is it fully?
Our general plan is on our website. What is now newly on our website as of, I think, December is a digital interactive map that shows our general plan map.
And that's what I was referring to. So that, that digital map, it's fully operational with, so you were just referring to the possibility of layers like zoning and stuff like that? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes. So right now, the, the main layers are the, are for the general plan. I'd like to add the zoning map.
What would that, what would that take? Were we talking funding? Were we talking about manpower?
I think it's just manpower, yeah.
I just feel like, you know, there is a lot of business coming here. We hold that reputation of businesses stand us sometimes, it's time. But having that availability, that could most definitely encourage a lot of businesses to come here. See, it would take a lot of time up here. So you're, so you're suggesting that success planning, lacking in planning division, are you referring to having somebody in that position there or you're just referring only to the assistant planner? Is that one position or is that two?
So in our planning division, we have some veterans that have a lot of institutional knowledge that if they could have a sort of a mentor apprenticeship relationship with a, with a new assistant planner, then that would really help us just as planning for the future.
Right. And then you also say you, you are very involved in supporting code enforcement. That has a lot to do with some of these businesses trying to figure out issues that they're having with our ordinance?
We get complaints for various things and every, every time it's something different. And so there's a different law that we, that we have to research and figure out. Sometimes, sometimes we, I shouldn't say every time, but there's a lot of, it's, every day is different. So yeah.
Is there any way that maybe in the future you could make some recommendations? Benefit, not only, but maybe something that we haven't looked at when it comes to those kinds of situations, based on your, your, with applicants?
Yes, keeping track of whenever there's a clerical error that I find in the municipal code or something that could be written differently. Keeping, I have a law.
You do have a law. Okay, so that helps.
Yeah. So at some point in the future, I'll bring forward possible update to some parts and it may be bundled and there may be some clerical things that we fix up. And there may be some more substantive regulations that the council can consider and decide on.
For the, the food vending program. For the food vending program, we have 10, we have only 10 applications at the moment, right? Is that what the minimum is?
There are 10 permits and that's the maximum.
And then how many more requests are you receiving at the moment?
Since I've been here since September, probably a handful, maybe five, five others.
Do we have kind of like a revenue chart of what we've been receiving from those vendors? Or is that not been considered?
Uh, we could look into that.
What was that?
We could look into that. I don't have a revenue.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So are you looking for direction on, on that particular matter?
I think we're just giving you a heads up that at some point in the near future, we bring an item forward. And, and we'd be open to any thoughts if the council had any at this point. But again, just a heads up that we'll be bringing an item forward.
And with all the old plans that you guys have in the back, have you been getting a lot of requests from businesses trying to figure out down piping and stuff like that? Have you been having?
Yes, sometimes. Yeah, yeah.
Are you along with the digital?
Oh, I think, I think if we finished it by the summer, that would be amazing and.
You actually ahead more ahead than I thought you were.
I don't want to be too optimistic though. What, we're doing our best. It's a, it's a constant, like whenever there's a free moment at all, even like because we, half of our employees work four tens. So our, our doors open at eight. They've got that 6:30 to eight o'clock to catch up on emails, prepare things. And then if there's a moment, then we can scan.
How long do you keep those prints? I'm sure they've been there for quite some time.
There's some old ones. I don't know. The oldest probably from the nineties.
It's not something you, you want to still keep them and store them, right?
Digitally, we want to keep them.
Comment I have is your, your department's got to be commended. I mean, the progress that you've made as far as putting things, you know, digitally, resident-friendly to, to look at site maps and things like that, you know, it's come a long way. You know, so the department's got to be commended. And I'm sure Mr. Michaels has seen the changes over the course of, of the years, just like Ms. Rhino. But, you know, you got to be commended. A little side question that is not part of your slide, but I was thinking about it. A lady here the other night was talking about relinquishing this sphere of influence. Okay? And giving it over to the city of Modesto. Is that a tough process?
I think it would be very tough. And thank you for the compliments, by the way. I talked a little bit with LAFCO Executive Director. And in order for that to happen, so many things would, it's, it's a pretty heavy lift. We'd, we'd have to update our general plan to remove that, those areas. We'd have to, just as, as difficult as it is to expand your sphere of influence, it's the same process to remove area from your sphere. There could be like a protest, and I don't mean that like people marching in the streets, but there's a legal way for people to say, I don't want to be part of the city. And, and I think that the only way for this disadvantaged community sent to the city of Modesto, if that, if everyone, if every, if the stars align, there's, there's still a possibility that people would find that option. So it, it could be a lot of time and resources spent. And at the end, it could still fail. And then all that time and resources would be wasted. So it, it's pretty heavy lift. I think that we would have to have some, something from the city of Modesto showing us that they're committed to that path. And so far, I don't think we've received anything from city of Modesto on that.
Well, you know, the other night I did tell her, you know, I made a suggestion that she did contact the city of Modesto to see if they're interested. Work with her county supervisors to, to start the process, you know. So just me speaking out loud, asking the question. I think from my standpoint, we may, might be better off to let the city, not the city, the residents of the area work with the city of Modesto to start the process and leave it at that. Would that be a safe way to say that be more beneficial?
I think the city of Modesto may have resources that they, at their disposal that if they want, if they had the will to move, that they could take the first step and that would be very helpful to us.
No, and, and with that being said, I mean, I asked the question and I, I do think that maybe the city of Modesto and the residents of that area need to take the first step. And, and not us because I, I believe we support that area with our public safety. With, with, even though it's Modesto City Fire now, at one time it was the City of Series Fire. And I think our PD is still in that area that, that takes care of that. I am, I don't know. Well, Chris, Lieutenant Perry is not familiar with the area we're talking about, but I want to say it's over by.
So it's over there by the 711.
Yeah, Kmart, just.
Hatch Road.
That area. Oh, Pecos Fire Station. I was trying to think of the, the area. And, and that general area is what we're talking about.
I was going to add that, that some of that area is not just Modesto. Some of it's a county pockets.
I think all of it's a county pocket. Sorry to interrupt you.
I think Park is Modesto, right? And then the county pocket is the resident area or something like that. But I know that we actually have to take, take charge in this. We can't just hand it over. We actually have to make the initiation to, in order to put in the request for that. I think it could be a bipartisan thing, most definitely. I think the residents there are, not to say anything on Modesto, are kind of underserved by that depleting park. And I think that if we as a city of Series support them and making sure that the city of Modesto upgrades that park, I think that, but like you said, if the resident's there, even though she came to the council and made that request of Emily, if the residents do not want to make that change, unfortunately we can't do it. For, for LAFCO. I think that as long as the city of Series does support that that park gets upgraded. Actually, our residents will take care of it.
Thank you, Mayor. Definitely an important function, planning land use. We're here about economic development, but definitely the, the ability to process those applications, the timeframe to process those applications definitely has an impact on economic, economic growth and economic development. So I think, yeah, I mean, I, that's, I guess that would be my one comment there as we transition over to economic development. Be, and, and a new, relatively new thing, I guess I'll say, is having economic development be in the planning department. I think there's, there's a synergy there to have economic development and planning together. When someone's calling, asking those questions, what does it take to develop this piece of property? We already have that connection between that inquiry and economic development. So I, I think it's, it's a good place to have economic development. And I'm going to hand off to Anthony at this point. So he can present to the council some of the things he's been working on. And I will say Anthony has hit the ground running. And he'll, he'll kind of run through what he's been up to and what the plans are for that, for that function at this point. Anthony?
Thank you, Alex. Good morning. Again, I'm Anthony Sims. I'm the Economic Development Manager. I'm going to be sharing with you guys our economic development successes, challenges and goals. First, I'd like to applaud Steve Hallam, Christopher Holm and all staff for providing me a smooth transition into this role. So I really appreciate that. As a city, we've experienced momentum and key milestones. We've been able to hire a full-time economic development manager. I grew up here, went to the local colleges, the family and two children. I go to one schools here. So I'm honored for this opportunity. One of the other key successes we've experienced in the past year was the opening of Walmart Supercenter. This achievement has opened the door to attract new businesses to the Gateway Center. Polay, Starbucks, Ono Hawaiian Barbecue, and others as well. We've also been successful in filling sites on Hatch Road as well. We've been able to recruit Dutch Brothers, Raising Cane's. And there's some other opportunities in the works as well. Next slide, please. With a continued partnership with the retail coach, they've been able to assist us in recruiting retailers such as Raising Cane, Arpa Freight, as well as going to retail trade shows for us and advertising our vacant sites to other potential retailers. Also been able to experience industrial developments in Miller and Morgan Road Industrial Parks such as NGB Construction and Snelson Companies, just to name a few. Also been, you need to communicate and collaborate with downtown businesses as well. Find out what their needs are. Also the relief across downtown, the Rad Card. That was a success for our community as it was expanded to all businesses within Series. Originally it was just designated for downtown businesses, but we were able to get that expanded to all businesses in Series that are not part of major chain. So the Rad Card's a digital gift card. You're able to download the app and get digital funds. And once you purchase those funds, it's automatically doubled. So it increases buying power for the consumer and more revenue for the business. Current list of businesses that are participating right now are Alfonso's Mexican Grill, Series Drugstore, Flawless Hair Salon, Sujit Confections, Almeritas, Little Mexico City, Meyer CPR, My Garden Cafe, Sam Cafe, Super Mom. And then there's more to come as well. We're out there advertising and trying to enlist those companies. Another successful initiative was installing and rotating downtown banners seasonally throughout downtown. Also developed downtown projects through the use of ARPA funds such as business incentives, facade improvement programs and other as well. Next slide, please. Few of the economic development challenges or needs that we're currently working on are a need for business attraction and retention efforts throughout the city and downtown. Need to develop and expand workforce, our talent development programs in Series. Need to continue to think creatively, market and improve downtown and downtown events. Another challenge is to be aware of is the RDA successor agency fund availability is becoming, go forward. There's also a need for more large site zoned for industrial usage to attract more companies and expansion opportunities as well. And then lastly, the economic development strategic plan is also in need of an update that we're currently working on right now. Slide, please. Within economic, within economic development, we've identified some specific goals and initiatives to focus on. Also in the coming slides, I'll be going over these five bullet points more thoroughly. And the goals related to each aspect of economic development listed below. Next slide, please. In business retention and expansion aspect of economic development, we've identified focus points to assist the needs of our current businesses. We've established a target goal to meet with 100-plus businesses this year so that we can identify those needs, celebrate their successes and provide resources that can help our local businesses. Currently I met with between 15 and 20 businesses so far. Resources, we can also provide them is grant information, recruiting referrals, Rad Card participation and other incentives and grants that become available as we move forward. It's important to support our local businesses. Our goal is to promote and attend grand opening celebrations. We're also working closely with the Small Business Development Center to host SBDC workshops at the Community Center for Small Businesses. The strategy will generate more activity and more foot traffic in Series to promote our community. Within the workforce development, talent development initiative, economic development, we're going to be collaborating with Series Unified School District, partnering with local tech academies, tech schools to offer educational programming courses for the youth and adults. We're going to leverage our partnerships with the Volt Institute and local colleges to have professors and instructors come speak to our senior class at our local high schools. We want to be able to support education by continuing efforts to promote extended learning. These type of efforts can elevate our community in the long run, in years. We're going to, we will be working to create entrepreneurship and future leadership clubs that would be held at the Series Community Center. It's vital to work with our youth and future leaders to help nourish that tank tank. Slide, please. Within attraction efforts of economic development, we'll strive to promote sites along Hatch Road. Proactively contact potential businesses to get on their radar so they become aware of our community. We also have a goal of recruiting family entertainment businesses. The old Walmart site, for instance, would be the perfect spot for a bowling alley, a movie theater, a roller rink. Family entertainment businesses provide more value points for our community. They attract visitors from other cities that can help stimulate our local economy. We want to continue to think outside the box and be creative in our traction efforts. We want to go out there and get them. We also want to recruit a multi-use sports complex. A sports complex stimulates local economy. Families go to sports activities. Then what they do is they go out to eat and shop in that same community. Having a multi-use sports complex can satisfy the needs of indoor recreational sports year-round such as indoor soccer, basketball, flag football, volleyball and more. It's also a revenue generator. You have the ability to host AAU tournaments and volleyball tournaments on the weekends as well. So again, a multi-use sports complex can really take the community to another level. We'll also be promoting and encouraging infrastructure additions to businesses such as electric vehicle charging stations through available grant programs. I've been able to meet with a number of businesses that have a high interest in applying for these grants so that they can have those electric charging stations already. We also want to enroll more businesses to participate in the Rad Card program, which is the meeting that we had recently about appropriating more funds to the Rad Card. So we'll be able to get more businesses enrolled so we can help them out. We'll also continue to focus on beautification and revitalization of our downtown area. We'll continue to promote and attempt to fill downtown properties with value-added businesses. We'll focus on aesthetic improvements such as updating and expanding banners, incorporating artwork, adding lights to the trees at night, revamping existing murals, incorporating wayfinding signage and building facade improvements and other incentives as well. These were some of the ideas that kind of generated from going out there and meeting with our downtown businesses, some of the stuff they'd like to see. We're also working hand-in-hand with the Chamber to implement downtown farmer's market to attract more visitors in our community regularly. We're going to be meeting with Turlock Farmer's Market in the next month to see what we can do to have something in May or June. So that's exciting. Slide, please. Regards to community growth enhancements, we'll support recreation and local organizations such as Series Youth Baseball, Series Youth Soccer by promoting youth and adult activities year-round. These are quality of life activities and events that improve overall economic vitality of our community. We need to support and participate in local committees, events, organizations for inspiration, knowledge and collaboration to progress our city. Continue to implement downtown ARPA projects as well to improve our city. Projects such as a one-to-two-minute marketing or attraction video of the city, wayfinding signs and other incentives as well. At this point, this would conclude my part of economic development for our successes, challenges and goals. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a comment. On Wednesday, I was at a Stan Cog Committee and we had, they had just finished a study revolving charging stations. So maybe reach out to them in regards to that. There's money there. Unfortunately, there wasn't a location in Series, but that doesn't mean that we can't work with maybe Walmart to put a charging station in that location. I think that, and there's funding there. So obviously if you looked into charging stations, they cost a lot. And I think the, the idea was, this is coming from Vice Mayor from Turlock. She was referencing to the, the lack of charging stations where she was having charging anxiety. She was trying to travel from Stockton to Mantica just to get a charge. But if we try to, you know, eliminate those gaps of her Turlock is getting the charging station, I don't know how many there is in Modesto, but if we can hit that gap and provide that service, I think there's an opportunity there. You can look into it.
I think that's a great idea because then we get them here. They come here, stop, charger station, now they're shopping.
Spend money. This is an all-time high. The farmer's market idea, I think that's, that's great. I'm sure that you guys have already had this conversation. We have a lot of local farmers here. And I think that, you know, must definitely help with debating. The locals kind of, that's, that's all I have.
I have a question regarding the charging stations. When, trying to think where I was at. I was somewhere and I ran into the owner of the new 76 station, 711 over on Whitmore and Blaker. 7-Eleven over on Whitmore and Blaker. And he said he wanted to put charging stations in, but that the planning commission turned him down. Is that correct? No?
I know that is not correct. It was just a ga- gas station. They thought about, at the ti- at the time that they were considering that, that maybe that would be something that they would bring maybe at some point. I don't, I do not recall that.
Thank you.
That was, that was the gas station that just, that's finished up in front of the Series driving? Is that the one you're talking about?
Correct. He, I believe it was at the end of a council meeting. He came up to me, he came up to me, and he said that the planning commission turned him down for electric charging stations. And I said, "That kind of seems strange. Did they give you a reason?" And he said, "No."
But there was never any conversation? You said there was a similar conversation?
Yeah, I don't remember, I don't recall that. I don't recall that conversation. But, but even, then when we've talked to Mr. Danda, we've encouraged him to, actually a staff, to put in some charging stations in some of the parking spots that they have. So.
I have a comment. I was glad to see you mentioned the Santa Claus 2030 Initiative, Anthony. I think Christopher and I have been, had a couple of different meetings for that, both through the city and, and my private life. It's, it's a huge amount of work doing, being done in a very quick amount of time to basically figure out how to up the talent level of potential employees in Santa Claus County, target where the, the best places would be for industry, and how to promote that on a higher living wage scale. So 100% we need to be involved with that Santa Claus 2030 Initiative as much as possible. A lot of the work's going to be done by other people, and we're going to be able to take advantage of it.
Actually, I do have one question. I love Series. Do you guys know when that's coming up? That's next month, right? In March, wait?
April 30th.
I, I think it's important that we support them in this, coming out of the pandemic. I know that how it started, that the idea was that, our feelings about the city of Modesto, or that they expanded this program to over 135 cities across California. I think it's important that we do support them. Not, not just the actual, just support, but I think there's an, there's an ability where we can possibly help them. Some funding possibly. Well, I don't know if that's something that we're interested in. I don't know the details, but I think it's worth at least maybe have some kind of a presentation by them at the next city council meeting of some sort.
Just to follow up on that, Love Series is out there looking for sponsorships. And that, that sponsorship includes a, a contribution. So then they have a book to the city. We, although we haven't seen anything formally, the mayor and I have met with the Love Series folks, and they have at least informally requested city sponsorship. And I think it was about $1,200, if I recall correctly.
Mr. Mayor, one question about the, the charging station. TID is presenting a contract to add a charging station here at the community center. So the, our attorney gave that contract to the city attorney to review. And once he reviewed it and it's okay, then we'll go ahead and proceed and get the council action on it.
Yeah, like I said, look into the, those fundings. So it might help out that project as well.
Yep, yeah, I'm pretty sure TID is paying for it. So it won't be a cost to the city.
Zero cost to the city. Sounds good to me.
And Mayor, just in, in follow-up to Councilmember Rhino's comment in regard to the 76 Station, it sounds like staff has, has been encouraging that owner to install those. We may want to have additional follow-up with him just to make sure he knows we're continuing to encourage that. So maybe James or Anthony, we could follow up with him. That would be good.
Absolutely.
But thank you, guys. I do have one, one other, one other item. I think that Christopher spoke to during the, the community development portion, spoke briefly to the update of the public facility fee nexus or a public facility fee nexus study, otherwise known as a development impact fee. So I, I don't think that fee's been updated for a number of years. Those things don't occur without sometimes a little bit of controversy. You'll typically have the development community engage in the process. But again, just want to point that out that we're likely going to be doing that. They do get some attention from the development community, particularly when we will have the opportunity for future residential growth and building. So just, just a heads up. It'll get some attention. It may get, it, it may get some attention. And, and again, those, those things don't occur without a little bit of controversy. The desire would be to have a process where the development community can be engaged in that process, and we can work very closely with the development community up in that study. So again, just a heads up. We'll be working on that. That's all. Anything else? Community development, economic development? Thank you, Patrick, Anthony. Lots going on there. I think we're handing off to the city clerk.
Thank you, Alex. Hello, good morning, Diane, your city clerk.
Good morning.
First slide shows picture of Christina and myself. I'm the city clerk, as you know. Christina is the deputy city clerk.
I'm not sure we needed my picture in there.
The city clerk's office reports directly to the city manager. So that was my way of creating an org part. So the city clerk serves as your elections official. I'm the local legislation auditor, which means I make sure that all of our meetings are run in accordance with the Brown Act and any other regulations. I'm the municipal officer. I'm the political reform byline officer, records manager for the city. And the city clerk's office responds to public inquiries, which are public records requests, and helps build relationships with your constituents because the first person they call when they have any complaints is to the city clerk. And I also provide support to city council and the city manager, along with Christina. Next slide, please. So the title says city clerk successes. And yes, there are some successes. There are accomplishments over the past year. However, 90% of our accomplishments are all mandated requirements. So we are required to do this, and we're required to do it well. So with a staff of two, we serve as the elections and FUPC filing officer duties. City clerk helped conduct the 2021 special election for District One vacancy. We also went through the council vacancy appointment process for one and four. Even though there was an appointment process initially for, for, we still had to have the ROV check and make sure that the candidates or the potential appointee live within that district. So we still went through the same process, just a little, not as complex as elections. We posted election information on the city's website. Campaign statements were made available online, and all that's required by AB 2151. Serve as a filing official for your annual statement of economic interest forms as well as your campaign statements, as mentioned earlier. And in addition to that, serve as a filing official for the city's conflict of interest code, which consists of 43 city-designated filers. Onto the right, we also helped facilitate meetings and public service. We supported a total of 40 city council meetings. Yes, we had quite a bit of extra meetings last year with all of the special meetings that we called and two Measure H committee meetings. We processed 128 resolutions and seven ordinances. With ordinances, I just kind of want to point out, it's not a matter of just bringing it to the council. There's a whole process. You have to make sure that it's properly noticed before it goes before the council. Then once the council introduces it, then it needs to be published that it has been introduced. Then it comes back after you do that publication. It gets a second reading. And after the second reading, I'm required by law to publish it within a certain timeframe in order for whatever action you took to be able to be effective and not challenged in court. Prepare to agenda in minutes, minutes for the 40 council meetings, which consisted of generating the packets. That was a total of 33,982 pages of paper, which equates to like 4.08 trees that we went through together. Processed 80 agreements and conducted seven bid openings, facilitated the COVID telecon printing that was in compliance with AB 361. And last year, we had marriage ceremony services on hold, but I am getting a lot of calls of people, since the weather's kind of nice, wanting to get married in our local parks and in the community center. Off to the bottom, my left, public records and records management. I'm, as a records management manager, maintain and update the city's homepage by serving as the administrator of the city's website. I help departments with updating their webpage. I'm the agent of service for summons, subpoenas, and claims against the city. I facilitate the response of public records requests. Last year, we had a total of 149 external public records requests. And you see quite a jump from when I first started six years ago. We were at 25, and now we're all the way up to 149 public records requests. And those are all external. That does not count all of the internal requests from staff looking for a contract or a resolution or deeds, things of that nature. On the bottom right, public service and records management. I'm responsible, the city clerk is responsible for the codification of the city's municipal code, which in essence means any ordinances that are passed by council, I make sure that they're incorporated into the online code. Manage all citywide special projects, and those are typically coordinated through the city manager. City clerk also serves as the administrator of the Zooms account. So I work with departments, giving them rights to Zoom, assigning licenses and things of that nature. One thing I never thought I would do, I manage all of the chamber's audiovisual equipment. So I be, city clerk's actually between quite an expert on audiovisual equipment with our equipment. So I make sure that it's updated when needed, when there's any equipment failure, that that is taken care of. As well as during the council meetings, we control the audio and man the cameras. Draft and issue press releases for the mayor and the city manager and develop, actually, city clerks last year developed and were maintaining the redistricting website in English and Spanish. Our consultant was going to charge us about $5,500 to create a webpage for our redistricting. I kind of looked at the requirements and thought, eh, we could do that. And we saved $5,500 bucks by having it created in-house. Next slide, please. City clerk goals and challenges. So see, these are some of the goals or some of our mandated duties that we need to comply to. But then they're also, in essence, a challenge because we might be a small office, but we're mighty. But we're very small and limited with our times. There's only so many hours in the day. So as a records management, a couple of years ago, we upgraded the city's electronic content management system, which was Laserfish. So we went from Laserfish to Avante to comply with our records retention schedule that the council adopted in 2020. So we've been able to incorporate the record retention schedule into our electronic document management system. However, in doing so, it's not a matter of just scanning documents, putting them into the system, and then you're done. You can find them. There's so much that goes on behind the scene. Someone needs to sit there and spend time scanning the document, importing it into our document management system, adding the proper metadata so it can be found, and then assigning the proper retentions code so they'll be in compliance with our records retention schedule. And that is very time-consuming, as Christina can attest to, because we haven't even been able to gone through one box. Part of that project was hoping to develop a contract, a tracking system because we are in need of being able to track contracts. So the idea was contract, scanning the contracts, importing them into the document management system, applying the right retentions code and metadata. So each quarterly, whether it be monthly, departments go, go to in their, run a report for all the contracts in their department, and they can see when they're about to expire. And we can kind of keep track of them. One thing that we're actively working on is the implementation of an agenda management system. We recently entered into an agreement with MuniCode meetings. They also codify our municipal code. We are working with developing the workflow and the agenda template and the agenda to start going digital. So we've been working with that, training, working, having several meetings with the consultant, and then doing a T-for-T training for trainers. And the thought is with that, once that's fully implemented, the city clerk's office is going to obviously administer the agenda management system. So we'll have to meet with all the departments and teach them how to use the agenda management system as well as working with council on how to obtain the packets on your device, mobile device, whether it be, I think you guys all each have a laptop, correct? Also, one of the challenges, our public records requests continue to increase. It seems each year, we have an additional public records request. I would say the reason I had requested initially an additional position, which took about, took about maybe five years to finally, thank you, the fire council, you had a position, was to help me with the public records request. And yes, she's helping. However, I would say, easily say about 75% of the time, 70 to 75, depending on any given month, is spent on public records requests, which hence doesn't leave a lot of time for all of the other mandated duties that we have. Right under that, as the elections official, the elect city clerk is responsible to administer the elections. We have an election this year, as we know, District One, District Two, and District Four, which will be a term of two years. Nominee period through Election Day is a very busy day for the city clerk, period for the city clerk, dealing with questions from the public, dealing with questions from the candidate, trying to work with them on their campaign statements and all of their mandated filings. And also this year is the FUPC biannual review of the city's conflict of interest code. So the city clerk will have to work closely with the city attorney on reviewing the entire city's conflict of interest code and see if there's any changes that need to be done with that. And that's quite time-consuming. To the right, support services duty. The city clerk provides support services. As I mentioned earlier, the city clerk is a Zoom support person citywide, is the main contact and the support person for all chambers equipment, the maintenance and orchestration of the AV equipment. In addition to that, working with city staff who want to use the AV equipment, we kind of train them on how to use that. I do want to point out, recently, part of the ARPA funds that were approved, we had some on there for the chambers upgrade. Chambers upgrade also consisted of all the audio, equipment, video. What happened is when we, luckily, in 2019, right before the pandemic hit, we had already started upgrading some of our chambers equipment. So we had already purchased one encoder box for the AV room to be able to stream via YouTube. And then once the pandemic hit, we bought a second encoder box over up in that way so we can go ahead and incorporate Zoom into that. So with the two encoder boxes, and then we had the new digital touchscreens and those screen, screens, we were able to get part of the work done. However, we were not able to complete it because it was going to be quite costly. So in order to finish everything and to get the old audio system with the new format, I think one of the estimates is like maybe 50,000 plus in additional 10,000 that we asked on there, which was a reoccurring annual fee to have hopefully our AV equipment consultant come in and start recording the meetings for us. Or if we have any issues, that he can troubleshoot it on the fly. I can troubleshoot a few things, but I'm not an expert in AV equipment. So I'm doing the best I can. And under AB 361, as you know, since we are functioning under AB 361, if there's any technical issues, we need to stop the council meeting and not proceed until all that's resolved. Also, the city clerk provides support to the mayor, city council, city manager, and city attorney because all the contracts need to be reviewed by the city attorney. Hence, all agreements first are reviewed by the city clerk to make sure they're in compliance with what he's looking for indemnification clause and other things. And then they're given to the city attorney for him to review. And this is all with a staffing level of two people. So dare I say, staffing is an issue, although I'm thankful for someone. But it would be very nice if at least city clerks get a halftime person to help with all the scanning, indexing, filing, because that desperately is needed for us to catch up on. In addition to that, there is a need for continual training for the city clerk, not just the city clerk, but the deputy city clerk typically in clerk's offices. A hierarchy is you have the city clerk, then you have the assistant city clerk, which serves as the city clerk when the city clerk is unavailable and also helps with election. And then you have a deputy city clerk. So here, we have the city clerk and a deputy city clerk that's both functioning as an assistant city clerk and a deputy city clerk. And since we're in the middle of a pandemic, if something were to happen to the city clerk, or I'm not sure what we would do in the middle of an election, we cannot very well tell the candidate, oh, come back with your nomination papers because city clerk's not here. Next slide, not slide, sorry. Bottom left, support services duty. City clerk facilitates the employee recognition committee meeting. Again, there's been an increased request, as I mentioned earlier, from internal staff with the turnover in staff. We have quite a few additional requests for historical di- guide, historical documents and guidance on city processes and procedures. Quite a few additional requests for historical guide, historical documents and guidance on city processes and procedures. And city clerk continues to respond to public inquiries. That's it.
You, you want to go first, you probably have more questions than I do.
I don't have a question, all I want to say is you do a fantastic job. You really do. I appreciate everything you do for me. And. No, I'm glad you got help. Because a lot of us don't know. Everything you do behind the scenes, but I know one thing without you, we couldn't function. So you got to be commended for everything you do and I am, I'm glad you have an assistant. And somebody to help you take some of that burden off. On another note, I do have one question. What if we utilize, because I don't know how important the documents are. It's get a student from one of the high schools. To help with filing and paperwork and things to give them some work experience. For city government. And also be able to help out. I don't know if that's a possibility, I don't know what we can do, but if we used part time that way. And maybe one from each high school. It's just a thought.
Can I add real quick, Mike? We actually, the old HR director, she implemented a internship program, but it was only on the college level. So I don't know if we can expand that program. And I remember I actually mentioned that to you Diane, and you had told me that some of these documents are, you know, very confidential. So we got to make sure that these people are vetted, so I think that. Yeah, I love, I love your idea, I think it's important and. And I'll just go even further to say, he's right, without you, we can, we'll probably be way more dysfunctional than we were last year. So. Be honest, so you know what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw some, just some ideas out there, council, this is obviously this is not in direction, but. In addition to that, if, why a part time, we can maybe get another full time, handle certain things and then in addition to that. We can implement, we can open up the idea of expanding the internship program. Think that, that will probably help you out even more because you're right, those elections are going to, they're going to be taking up a lot of your time. Yes, this is another crazy idea, don't shoot me here. I personally feel that you're, you're. There's, there's this need for, we're having all these retention issues and I really feel. Somehow, I don't know what the process would be, I feel like you're underpaid, just my personal opinion. I think that if there's an ability to try to figure out a way to see what other city clerks are being paid in our area. Compared to what you're getting paid, I think that would be an opportunity for the council to look into this. Honestly, everything that you. I don't know how you do it, must have a twin or something. But no, thank you once again for all your hard work. Let me just double check, I did have some questions. Oh, that was it, actually, that was it.
I'd like to chime in as well, even though the city clerk's office is not an employee of the, of the city council. I know personally that they help us tremendously and they're kind of the unspoken heroes. Whereas we may appreciate all the other departments, but for me, the closest department I work with is the city clerk's office. Over the years as a former employee of the planning department. And then once I became on the council, I've seen. A number of city clerks and I have to say that we have the best one right now, we really do. And I would also like to thank the small and mighty ladies of our city clerk's office, both you and Christina, thank you very much.
Yeah, one place to go for that part time help may be project guest, may want to contact them, it's actually paid for. And it's job training also to the point where maybe you end up hiring them as city staff. And. As the son of the first ever elected city clerk in series. Know why this gets me every time I think of this. But my mom was the first elected city clerk in series. Three thousand years ago and she's still kicking, she asks me routinely, how on earth? Does the city clerk do all the stuff they do now? When she was a city clerk, she took minutes by hand at the city council meetings, the city manager pretty much did all the other stuff. And she held three hours a week in, in her office and I believe in the same office that you have now, which is something we need to talk about later too. But it's, it's unbelievable the amount of work the both of you do and how you support all of it. Like IT, you're the hidden gem that seems like nobody really understands what you do until we need you to do something or we screw something up and you fix it for us. So there is never going to be enough praise for what you do and for the both of you, so thank you very much.
I can't add much to what's already been said, but I know that Diane, you've helped me tremendously and I really appreciate everything, thank you.
Thank you, council and mayor.
Alex.
If there's nothing else for the clerk's office, we'll move on to finance.
Okay, again. And that's the picture of people who wanted to be in the picture. The rest were, I think, helping customers and. Doing payroll or something. Okay, so the next slide is our org chart. And we are currently fully staffed. With thirteen full time employees. We have a deputy finance director and a secretary in the department, two accountants, one person doing accounts payable. Two payroll technicians, a revenue and customer service supervisor and four account clerks in the utility department. The next slide, please. So our current department challenges. The biggest one has been the state mandated water shut off moratorium that was put into place March of two thousand and twenty. It was currently lifted, it was lifted February first. This year, so we will begin waters, we have not been able to do water shut offs in two years. We will begin that process, our first shut off will probably be in May. Since we have to now. Implement the state mandated SB nine nine eight, which gave a longer waiting period between when the bill was due and when you can shut them off. It's now a sixty day waiting period. That we have before we can shut someone's water off and we have to start implementing that now. We were in the process right before the moratorium. So. That's not going to be. Residents are not going to be too happy, but it's got to happen. The training of our new staff, we do have. Two brand new payroll technicians. And the. Water supervisor or the revenue and customer service supervisor is new to her position. So we do have training of those new staff members and. Cross training so that when we do lose members or, you know, they're out temporarily that we don't have a disruption in service. And then our, along with the state mandated water. SB nine nine eight, we also have garbage reporting requirements which are, are putting additional workload on the, the utility staff. Our successes, we continue to have thousands of utility. Well, one hundred and forty five thousand utility transactions processed by three or four people every year. We continued the conversion to munis. Last year, we, we were twenty, twenty twenty, we started using the financial system in munis. We are, we are at the tail end of our payroll and HR conversion. And we plan to go live relatively soon and then we. And then we will start the conversion for the utility billing system. And this will be a big undertaking. We began the process of implementing invoice cloud, which we're real excited for because it will allow our utility customers to pay online. They can pay, they'll, they'll get an email that says click here, pay your bill, they can pay by phone. I think, I think it's going to be well received. We continue to strengthen interdepartmental communications, helping. All the other departments with their budgets, you know, they come in and ask questions, we, we have training manuals for the munis conversion for the munis to, for the budget entry. So. Yeah, we just continue to strengthen those relationships. Then with the conversion of payroll and HR. We continue to become a paperless department, we will never truly be paperless because finance just likes paper, but we'll try, we have freed up one whole cabinet so far. And then our current department needs. Is just the completion of the utility billing phase, like I said, is going to be a big undertaking. And there will be customers with. Concerns because of course the bill will look different. But we've done it before, we'll do it again. And then just getting staff trained so that we have, we can provide the best level of service. That is all.
Any questions for finance?
You guys are interested in more staff training?
Yeah, we, we just have to get our staff trained, you know, cross trained really.
They're there, the, the training is available, we just.
The training is available, yeah, we just have to get the time, you know, and if we're going to send two payroll clerks off or payroll techs off to training. We have to make sure that we've got somebody available to do payroll. So it's more the cross training, yeah.
All I have.
If there's nothing else. Time is it, I don't know what the lunch schedule was, if lunch is.
Eleven forty five. We'll go ahead and go check and if it's there, let's all take a lunch break, I'm sure people are hungry.
I guess I would just offer mayor, before we break for lunch, any council comments, questions? Before we break for lunch, that was a lot of material, we covered a lot of, a lot of things. Just want to give, give you as the council, an opportunity before break for lunch. Questions, comments, concerns.
I just appreciate everybody being here and being so prepared. I mean, you haven't been able to, there isn't a question you haven't been able to answer. So it just proves we have great staff and you guys take the job seriously, sure makes our job a lot easier, so thank you.
Thank you, sir, any, anything else?
Questions?
Okay.
Time till she comes back and lets us know what.
I'm guessing lunch is probably there, so rather.
There any questions from, is there any comments about you?
Um, I, I don't, I don't think so, I mean, I, I think we've had some good, good comments by the council, we're tracking what we're hearing. A number of the items, uh, you saw, be presented by the staff. May, may make their way into the proposed budget, again, it's unfortunately a function of financial resources available to do the things we want to do. There I go, filling the city manager's role of dream crushing, so I'm sorry about that, but. Yes, so the, these items will be incorporated in the budget and lunch is here.
Okay, so before we leave, just want to let everybody on Zoom know that after we're all complete. After council direction on the discussion, on other discussion items, we'll have an opportunity for the public to make comment. Five minutes, we will be back, if it's eleven forty five, we'll be back at twelve thirty. Thank you, everyone.
microphone check. Just letting everybody know we're getting ready to start. Are we live?
Okay, welcome back. We're back, everyone. We're going to go ahead and move over to fire chief wife.
Good afternoon, council and staff and our citizen. Today, I'm going to go over the fire presentation for the goal setting. If you can go to the next slide, please. So this is the mission of the Modesto Fire Department and I wanted to put this out there. I know you guys can all read it, but we are professional community service driven organization that provides all risk, emergency services to meet the needs of our community. As a regional leader in innovation and training in the fire service, our mission is to serve, protect and partner with you for a safer community. Our vision is a sustainable organization that provides the personnel, training and equipment necessary to meet the needs of our community. A customer service driven organization, an organization that is committed to professional development of its members, a regional leader in innovation and training, able to provide resources that address the diverse needs of the community, a team whose members are empowered, enthusiastic in their service and role models in our community and leaders in our profession. So you look at our organizational chart here. The contract for service started last August, August 1st. And with that, the fire department went over to the city of Modesto to provide contract fire services to the city of Series. So with our organizational chart here, you'll see the fire chief and there's two currently two assistant chiefs. So we have a total of actually five contracts now that we provide service to other communities. So there's two assistant chiefs that oversee those five contracts. So one assistant chief oversees the Oakdale Fire Protection District, the city of Oakdale and the Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District. And then the other assistant chief is myself. I oversee the city of Series and the city of Turlock. And below that, you can see our different divisions from community risk reduction, business operations, emergency operations. The next slide, please. The accomplishments over the last year and most of the divisions or different departments talked about it. We continued to manage the COVID-19 pandemic and as you all know, we were all faced with this two years ago and so many uncertainties with that. And as first responders responding to people who had COVID on a daily basis, it posed a lot of challenges for the fire department. And it also posed challenges to us internally with our staffing to keep everybody healthy and safe. And it's hopeful that we can put this behind us and move on. As I mentioned, one of our accomplishments was successfully implementing the contract for service, which started on August 1st. And as was mentioned earlier from finance or I believe HR, that we successfully transitioned the employees over to Modesto Fire Department. Some of the accomplishments with the facilities is we installed a new station alerting system. We got a grant from the state of California and we replaced all the station alerting systems in the whole county. So it was a huge project and it was part of a $14 million grant to replace technology for the fire service in Stanislaus County, thanks to Heath Flora. Assemblyman Flora, I should say. Since the implementation of the contract and in this fiscal year, we've completed two regional fire academies. We currently started a new academy this last Monday. We have about 23 firefighters going through that academy and that's at our training center located on Service Road. With the contract, we've been able to increase the level of service in the city of Series. We currently have a paramedic firefighter at our engine 15 downtown. And thanks to the ARPA money, we're going to be able to get the ALS equipment for paramedics on all our apparatus. So if we have a firefighter who's a paramedic working that day overtime at one of the other stations, we'll be able to have an ALS engine company that day at one of the other stations. We've also been able to implement the fourth person staffing at Station 18. And we've hired a full-time fire inspector for the city of Series. We've been, well, we're in the process of restoring our water rescue program. Our new boat should be here this May. We're also in the process of replacing two staff vehicles. Unfortunately, they won't be here till much later this year due to the backlog and orders. All our firefighters now, we've been working on this one for a number of years. So it's great. Now all our personnel have ballistic personal protective equipment for an active shooter situation. We were able to purchase an SCBA compressor and fill station for Station 17. And just some, just some data here on emergency responses. We ran 6,179 calls out of three stations, which was an average of 17 responses per day. A couple of other items that I didn't include in the slideshow. Our hazmat team is currently at what they call a type two hazmat team. And it's based on the equipment that you have and the number of trained personnel that you have each day on duty. I'm proud to say we are going through the final process right now of upgrading that team to a type one team. So we'll have nine personnel on that are hazmat specialists every day. We recently had an incident out at Stanislaus Farm Supply where it was extremely valuable to have that type two team ready, on duty and ready to respond to the incident. Now we're going to have a type one team here very shortly. And another accomplishment I just wanted to note is the financial piece of the contract for service. I did a comparison in fiscal year 1920. Our operating budget for the fire department without capital improvements was 7.7 million. In fiscal year 2223, basically four budget cycles later, we, or three budget cycles later, where our operating budget is 6.9 million. But we've been able to cut almost $746,000 from our operating budget and yet we increased level of service to the city of Series. There's some projects that we currently have that we've identified that we still need some help with, with our capital improvement is some of our equipment and our stations. Fire Station 19, either remodel or replacement. This fire station was built in the 40s and it was initially intended as a volunteer fire station. As it became a paid staff, the station was converted. Bedrooms were made, but it was never truly designed to house full-time firefighters. We currently house three firefighters at this station and we are working with Senator Anna Cabrera, right? Cabrillo? Cambrillo? Okay, sorry. Anyway, working with the senator on state funding to try to replace the station. We requested 5 million from the state to replace the station and we're working with other local assemblymen to help with that process and hopefully we can get that station replaced. If we can't get it replaced, we do need to do a remodel out there. At a minimum, a bathroom remodel. It's in pretty bad shape. It's really not not a good station. I would put it that way. It's, it's, it's very old and it just was never intended for this purpose. Fire Station 15, we have an old SCBA compressor that's requiring a lot of maintenance. So we would like to work on replacing that. For our health and wellness program, we've identified exercise equipment at three of the stations. With our new boat, we're going to need some new water rescue, personal protective equipment. Equipment that we have is old and it's been sitting for many years now. As the program has really been inactive and it hasn't been used and it's gotten in bad shape. And we've also identified the need for six BK radiant. So our goals moving forward is to continue to improve on our regional model. As I mentioned, now we have five contracts for service. And with each of those, we look for different ways to improve our model and our response for service. We'd like to continue to make improvements at the training center. We talked about a new prop or a new training tower that we'd like to put out there, build the containers. And if anybody in the council or staff would like to take a tour of the facility, let me know and I can show you what we've done out there the last few years. When I came here in 2019 as the fire chief, there was tumbleweeds out there. It was a storage facility and had been shut down due to financial reasons, the station was closed. So we were able to turn that into an incredible training center for Series, Modesto Fire and the other partner agencies and MCS. We're working with communications and dispatch. We're having issues. I've been working with Chief Collins to streamline our, our calls to our dispatch center so we can lessen our response time. We're also looking at other possibilities of possibly creating our own dispatch center that would dispatch fire and EMS. As we come out of COVID, we can really start concentrating again on community risk reduction. One of our divisions is typically in a fire department, you have fire prevention. Well, what we've done is we created a new division called Community Risk Reduction where fire prevention falls under the community risk reduction. So this includes community outreach to the schools and our citizens on fire safety and communication with the public. We're continuing our professional development. And our big challenge, like most of the department heads have mentioned this morning, is employee retention for firefighters. It's very competitive for them or able for them to go into the Bay Area, work for employers over there. So it's, it's, it's a challenge for us, but we've formed an employee retention committee to look at ways so we can keep our employees here instead of going elsewhere. And that's it. Any questions?
Chief, I have a question. Going back to our inspectors, that's a question that I had asked when I first started in the last workshop that we had. And at the time, you weren't too sure what the answer was. Hopefully you might have an answer for me now. My question is, what type of system are we using to upload our fire life safety reports via fire contractor?
We use a system called ZOOL RMS.
How effective is that system?
It's, it's getting old.
Have you guys found any other type of a service that would better than what we have?
They're currently conducting that right now.
Great. I was just curious. And wanted to say I'm happy that the hazmat team, that you guys are able to move to type one. I think that's important. I think that's the only questions I have.
The two new staff vehicles on order, are those through the city of Modesto or those through the city of Series? Cause I know the series still retains their equipment.
Yes, they're to replace two existing vehicles.
For Series or Modesto?
Series.
Okay. Second thing is, is because I'm not familiar with the extra numbers. Fire Station 19, is that the one on Pecos?
Yes, we changed the number. It used to be 16, but due to responses, 16 and 15 sounded the same. You couldn't differentiate the companies when they were given a sign. So we changed it to 19, which we had in our queue. We had five stations that we had in case we ever built the fifth station. So we went ahead and 19, so it lessens the confusion in it.
And definitely, I know that one, I've been there a few times. Definitely needs to be redone. So I wish you all the luck in getting the funding.
Mostly a comment, when we decided to look into this contracting with the Modesto Fire and everybody wasn't on board, nor should they have been. In seven months, the amount of service has been amazing. We've seen it on these huge issues that we've had recently. And this $700,000 ish dollars in saving is just a bonus. When we pitched this, when I pitched this to as many people as possible, increased amount of service of 20 to 30% was the valuable component. We've seen that already with our administration, but you're, you're coming back to Series. That's been fantastic. But the fire, fire inspectors and fire marshal, things we hadn't seen for a long time in Series. It's working out exactly like we had hoped. So congratulations, Chief Ernst also. And for everybody that was on board and for those of you that weren't, that took a chance, congratulations, because it's working exactly as intended.
I actually had one question, maybe just for my benefit, the fire inspector would maybe for my benefit in the council, that new series fire inspector, what would that position be doing covering?
Sure. So that position will be doing all new construction inspection, business inspection. Any calls for like permits? Anytime there's a permit of a new business, we go out and do an inspection of a new bit.
Excellent. Anything else? And I'll maybe say, add a little flippantly on those two new staff vehicles, no chrome bumpers on those. It's a thing in the fire service, right? I don't want to see chrome bumpers on our vehicles. Let's see. Thanks, chief. I'm kind of giving you a bad time. Or Measure H, I think Latisha, you're covering Measure H.
Yep. Measure H, just a brief overview. Preliminary audit numbers for fiscal year 2021, revenues up 23%. Again, I believe it's just everyone's spending their stimuli payments. Expenditures increased by less than 1%, so they stayed pretty, pretty much the same and fund balance is over 1.7 million. So that was the end of last fiscal year. Measure H pays for 10 police and seven fire positions for the equivalent of with contract. It also pays for equipment and the proportional share of costs related to the employees. Overall, Measure H is in a solid position. For this fiscal year, we are expected revenue to come in over budget also and expect reserves to be over $2 million.
I do want to say thank you because you looked right at me because you know what my next question was? Is how does the seven fire positions, you know, since we don't own that personnel? So that just rolled into the fire contract. Thank you.
Was on mute. Other questions regarding to Measure H?
Well, just for clarification, because of the way the Measure H was put together. Okay. And I'm assuming and thinking that it does, but is there any kind of verbiage in there that says that we can roll that into the fire contract? Since it wasn't originally part of the Measure H spending plan?
So I reached out to the auditor and asked if, if the contract is a valid expense for Measure H. And he said, as long as you're paying for fire services, it is still valid.
Okay. Do we need to maybe work with the city attorney by having that added in there that it was? I mean, specifically say the fire contract? I mean, that's something we can ask the city attorney, sorry.
Work with the city attorney.
When we talked about this, they found that verbiage and it's in there. It specifically says what you can and can't use it for and you can use it for. It specifically says what you can and can't use it for, and you can use it for what we're using it for in the measure. They looked at it with a fine tooth comb before we were able to do this, and it's 100% okay to do it, and it says it in there.
Well, I do realize that, and it says we can use it for fire personnel. But my question was, because we changed it to a fire contract. A fire contract, we are contracting our services out, and that's why I ask if it was in there. Because I'm going to say it doesn't say fire contract services in the Measure H, you know, expenditure bill. So that's the reason I was asking that.
Yeah, and we went over that extensively, and it doesn't have to say that. Just as long as it's covered, we're covering the firefighters through Measure H. That's all it has to say, and it clearly says that. Thanks.
I just wanted to say that. I noticed that Rose Linda has her hand raised. We're going to actually hold off for comments until after we're done. After council direction and other discussion items.
Okay, thank you, Bear. I think there's a slide for the manager. Trying to help me figure out what I do. So a range of responsibilities, implementing council goals and priorities. One of the bullets I added, and what I feel is one of my primary responsibilities is. Getting the city, the organization to a position of long-term fiscal stability. And that's, there is no silver bullet to that. I think it's a broad-ranging strategy. Making sure our fees have been updated recently, making sure they're up to date. Doing things like that development impact fee study. So we know that we're planning for the future, planning for facilities for the future. And in a position where new development is paying their fair share of those facilities we need. So certainly one of my goals is to try and work towards that long-term fiscal stability. Overseal city operations day to day. And that's a wide range of things. Day-to-day operation of the city, just trying to make sure things are running smoothly. The strategic plan and implementing the council's strategic plan. We talked a little bit about that earlier this morning. And the council rules, procedures, those were last updated in 2018. There was some discussion about looking at those, refreshing those. So I don't know if there's an interest of the council to do that, but certainly something we can launch off on if there's an interest of the council. So primarily day-to-day operate, day-to-day management of the city, implementing the council goals. And working towards a long-term fiscal stability. For me, it's kind of a simple approach. Revenues should not exceed its expenditures. It's kind of a. Generally my approach, when you get those lines crossing, that's when you get yourself in trouble. So really overly simplified. My overly simplified approach to budget management, that sort of thing. So I think that concludes department presentations. I think we wanted to have an opportunity to, for the council to comment, ask questions on department operations. Department, potential department wish lists, needs. There's been some good conversation amongst council. I don't know if you want to, you know, go back to any of those departments at this point or. Move forward to other discussion items. We do have some other items that the staff wanted some input from you as the council on. We also did want to show off, I think, the city's new website. So we want to spend a little time on that. And we do want to give you as the council the opportunity to bring up any items that you might want to discuss amongst yourself. That, and have a conversation about other priorities, goals, that sort of thing. So kind of open at this point to the pleasure of the council. But we do have some things, at least the staff wanted some input on. So if there isn't other comments for the council, we'll launch into the staff list of items and then council items. But if you want to ask us more question, have some more conversation, you could certainly do that as well.
Council, do we have any more questions about everything we discussed today? You guys want to go over these four items that they have before we go into ours? Make a difference to anybody here? I think it might be fun if you, how do you feel? Let's do that first. Yeah, let's do that first.
You know, I know the budget process is coming up, but you know, I think one thing I'd like to see along with our budget. If we can have a little sidebar on the budget to see what the impacts would be if we did. Help out the community development department, you know, with another personnel and the city clerk. You know, to help the process with some of this stuff moving forward. I know it's going to become an election year. And, you know, we have the budget process, and if we have a little sidebar which would say, okay, this is what the impacts would be. Then we can look at how we're going to incorporate that or what we're going to do. Because I think that as we grow and, you know, Mitchell Road grows, that we do need the assistance in those areas. I mean, we do have plan checks in place with the city of Modesto. Maybe you can incorporate the personnel that you need, plus maybe somebody that would do the plan checks. You know, but have a little sidebar away from the budget, so we can see what the impacts are. I think that would help us out when it comes to the budget process.
Thank you, Mike. That's a great idea. Any more questions, Mike? Start off with the employee recognition.
So your city clerk Diane, again. So the employee recognition committee has been meeting. And back in 2020, council had a goal-setting meeting and prior discussion was held regarding employee engagement. And recognition, and we wanted to try to find a way to help boost morale and retain employees. Based on that conversation, an employee recognition committee was formed. And in 2020, they met throughout the year. And 2021, we had planned a annual event. It was employee picnic at Whitmore Park that was held in 2021, May of last year. It was a very successful event and very much appreciated by staff. There were rough prizes and the employees were able to network with each other. At the picnic, employees are recognized for their years in service. With the mayor reading the names of each employee that had reached years in service ranging from one year to five, 10, 15, 20, and so on. The committee has been busy planning our next event. The next annual picnic will be held on Thursday, May 12, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 at Whitmore Park. It will be very similar to last year's event. The committee also held discussions regarding finding ways to recognize employees again, just as last year, and presenting them with a certificate. And possibly a gift card that would range from $15 to $100 based on their years of service. The committee also discussed the possibility of forming an official recognition program. Several years ago, it's my understanding that the committee had an awards program through OC Tanner. That provided employees the opportunity to pick out service awards based on their years of service. And the committee would like to know if this is something council would like us to explore further. Or if you want to just, us to just focus on planning events. And also how the committee felt about us planning, awarding gift cards to the employees based on their years of service. Want to make sure we're heading in the right direction.
Just wanted to make one comment. Last year, I read off all the names with Tom Westbrook. If the council is interested, it'd be fun if we all took a couple of the sections and we all as a group of the council. Give away some of these awards if the council's interested. That's my only comment. And I support the idea of further having some, some things that we can give back to our employees. I think it's great, it's important, and it was fun last year.
I was part of the OC Tanner. Program, and when they implemented it, it implemented it. I had a lot of years on service, and it was based on the number of service, the different prizes you could get. Or the different things. I wound up getting a choosing for myself, this ginormous telescope that we still use. I mean, to me, that was personally. Something that I enjoyed, I've shared it with my grandchildren versus hanging something on the wall. But I don't know what the cost is to the city, but I know it was a big morale booster. I mean, all the employees look forward when they got to that certain year that they were going to get to choose something. And I'm in favor of that.
I agree with Councilman Rhino, as a 5,000-year employee of the county. I've been able to do that three times, I believe, choose from a catalog or something that they sent. I agree, I think it was really cool to be able to get something I knew that I could use. And that would remind me of my time in service to the county. The best thing I got was an amazing set of kitchen knives. And if you knew how much I loved to cook, it was great. So I think maybe talk to the people at the county and see kind of where, how they do it. Probably no reason at every event that we all to have a really great program set up.
You know, I'm in support of it. I work for a company that you got something after 10, 15, and then 20, and you got to pick from a catalog. You know, I'm in support of it. The other thing I do like is, and even though it's a jewelry box collector. You know, it's what it is, it sets in a jewelry box. I also liked when they gave my 10-year pin and my 15-year pin. So along with being able to pick that out, that is something that, you know, was a milestone accomplishment. So, you know, I think on top of what they get to pick, they also get a city pin with, you know. And it might not mean things to a lot of people, you know. But picking something from a catalog is something that you're going to remember forever. You know, but I'm totally in support of it.
Yeah, I concur, you know, in the private sector where I work. When someone recognizes, even if it's just a simple certificate. It means a lot to them and they share it with their family and it adds to morale. I support recognizing employees.
Thank you, council. Moving on to AB 361 teleconferencing, is that going to be you as well?
AB 361, on September 16, 2021, Governor Newsom signed AB 361, which allows cities to continue to meet remotely during a proclaimed state of emergency. Under modified rules of the Brown Act. The bill is in effect until January 1, 2024, and authorizes local agencies to use teleconferencing. Without complying with certain restrictions of the Brown, certain requirements imposed by the Brown Act. When a legislative body of a local agency holds a meeting under a declared state of emergency. So in essence, every 30 days, when we have that resolution declaring that we're still functioning under AB 361, we're declaring a local state of emergency. A local emergency. When holding a meeting under AB 361, certain requirements must be met. And I'm not going to read them all, but I am going to touch on just a couple. So it allows, we must allow public access, be it public to access the meetings. And we require a portion on the agenda to allow access to public to comment through Zoom or teleconference, which we're doing that and meeting that provision. We need to give notice to the public how to access the meeting and how to contact us if there's a requirement. Most importantly, one of the big requirements is stop the meeting until public access is restored. In the event of a service disruption that either prevents us from broadcasting the meeting to the public using a call-in or internet feature. Any action taken during such a service disruption can be challenged under the Brown Act existing provisions. As you know, we've had issues in the past with our internet connection issues and equipment failure. As we did not, as I mentioned earlier, we did not have efficient funds when we first upgraded the chambers to complete the entire project. And because of Wi-Fi issues. Council, we'd like to just get council direction on your desire to continue holding meetings under AB 361. And those restrictions are going back to how we conducted meetings pre-COVID. And we could still stream live, we still stream live through Zoom or YouTube. But we would just not have to stop the meeting if we had any technical issues. So basically, that's the direction that we're seeking. We'd like you to let us know how you want us to proceed. Continue to declare a local emergency every 30 days, function number AB 361. Or go back pre-COVID, but still allow the public to participate if they'd like through Zoom and/or YouTube. But if we had technical issues, we would not have to stop the meeting.
And if we decided to go back to what we used to do, that means the council cannot be remote, right? Or we can?
Council could participate remotely. I don't believe all of you could, but council could if there was an issue. And it would be where, let's say, a council member was out. They'd have to, they'd have to post their location on the top of the agenda. And then, in essence, you had to allow public access to, let's say, council, yes, your house, right? So you'd go back to the restrictions that were in place pre-COVID.
That was, I mean, there's, so you still could, I would doubt Ms. Rhino would actually do it at her house now if people have access to your house, would you? Yeah, okay, she said, bring some coffee, bring some tea. I don't, I don't want to, you know, stop the public from being able to access Zoom. Or it being streamed on YouTube. I think that's important. It does engage the public more, as we can tell, we have folks here in two online. And the reasons that the persons may be online is because they obviously can't be here in person, so I don't want to stop that. The issue that I always had with this was the technical difficulties. There was a meeting where we literally had to take the laptop up there and have somebody FaceTime. I mean, it was, to me, that's embarrassing. But we resolved that with our funds, our system. But I mean, I'm looking for the council's opinions on this.
I think we should continue with AB 361. If we're going to be YouTubing, however, we're going to, or Zooming. That if we do have an issue, we should stop so those people at home that couldn't come to the meeting. Have the ability to chime in or to hear what's going on.
As you're looking for a direction, does this need to come to council anyways or vote?
Like, at the next council meeting, there will be a resolution for you guys continuing AB 361. We need to do that legally in order to function, hold meetings under AB 361. We have to call a local emergency every 30 days.
Right, right.
Sorry.
Bear in mind that any technology upgrades could take upwards of six months. The supply of technology equipment, we're still waiting on stuff. We've been waiting for 14 months. So even just bear that in mind, that we still may not see the technology upgrades this year. Or for the Zoom presentations.
You know, I can take that under advisement and understand that part. But I do agree that with Councilmember Rhino, that if we're going to continue to do the AP 361. That if we have technical difficulties, to me. Those people signed online to watch it, and if it's interrupted, we should have to probably stop until they could. Until it can get back up and running, because that is the reason why they're doing things remotely. And just to cut them off and not be able to say, see 15 minutes of the meeting, that defeats the whole purpose.
Well, we realized recently, it's, we don't have a choice on whether we can do it or not. We weren't doing it when we were supposed to be when we had difficulties. We figured that out, correct? And now we're within the law, stopping it anytime there's a difficulty. So it's not, we don't have a choice anyway. We just weren't doing it correctly.
Have a support? Have a support. Little extra though. Okay, so now now for something very exciting, uh the preview of the city's new website.
So we're going to preview the city's uh new website. They are still developing it, but they have the homepage so far done. And um they're working on PD's page and Public Works, but I kind of wanted to show you. So it's a new color palette. Right off the bat, there's a new color palette to it. On the top, you have the banner of pictures. We can alternate between five to seven pictures, so we'll be able to swap those out whenever we want. And then if you scroll toward the middle, we have um the new color palette for the buttons. We kept it at six buttons because we thought those would be the ones that would be primarily used. If we try to put additional buttons on there, it looks a little crowded. You'll notice that there's a crisper white background behind the buttons. And then if you scroll toward toward the middle, what we did is we tried to do a um widget based webpage where you have more icon based, so it's more visually pleasing to the eyes and you can easily access what you would like. So on news flash, what we propose to do is we're going to be working with departments and hopefully departments can send us um news newsworthy information that that we can keep updated. I'd like to keep this as updated as possible because when people go to your webpage, they want new and fresh content. They don't want to read something that's been posted on there for a couple of months. We moved the calendar over to the right, so it's balanced with the news flash. It it has a little bit more of a richer color on there with a little bit of a different format. Again, we'll be doing the same thing, reaching out to departments. Let's say, for example, recreation, we'd like recreation to put all of their classes out there, any other events. This way, they're all in one location. If you scroll down, we added an area that says resources and recommendations. This is where we propose to add things such as you need to learn changes about your residential, you know, residential disposal service, click there. You want to register for a class, click there. So what we want to do is also again, reach out to departments and anything that you want to get out to the public. Let's put that on the homepage and have that change every now and then. I don't want it to be the same information over. So we try to make it visually pleasing, but at the same time, that has uh same time, it has content on the relevant content that people are going to be seeking. So this is a new color palette and we just kind of wanted to run it by you and see what your overall thoughts were about the change. One other change that we did is if you scroll up toward the top, instead of the search bar being right in the middle where it currently is, it's over to the top. It's on my top right. You see that? We moved that up to the to the top. So the search feature is not right in the middle. You can see, still see some of the nice graphics. Um if we go to Public Works and Police, so Public Works and Police did something a little bit different. Can you go to the police one? So Public Works and Police did something a little different. What they did is they purchased a package that's going to allow them to customize their page. So now what they can do is they can swap out the pictures and put whatever pictures they'd like. In addition to the top where it's, and now they can have their own city logo, so it's their own webpage within a webpage. And on the mega menu, which is the mega menus where it says our community, city services, your government, they're going to be able to customize that. So they're going to be able to customize that to their own links, independent of the overall city page. So I think it's, this format works better because they have their own like home where they can put relevant information on there, independent of um the overall cities and the public works did the same thing. You wait, scroll more toward the middle, sorry. These buttons up here, they'll be relevant. These are just placeholders. They'll be able to customize this to whatever features they want to um highlight. Where it says, welcome to the series Police Department in the middle, they'll be able to send out um email blasts to people. So people can actually subscribe, just how we have subscribers on our homepage. And they can put out anything they want that'll also tie into social media. So it it they they function with each other. The calendar also, they can have some of the um city homepage calendar information in addition to any of their special events, resource and recommendations, that's the area where they'll also be able to add their own resources and recommendations. So this is the overall um layout of the new city website. And we just kind of wanted to see if we can get a few comments on the overall color palette and the layout.
Looks nice, better than what we have now, that's for sure.
Yeah, this goes along with the new technology that everybody's using of tile based or app based dashboards where it's see it, click on it, goes to what you want. And having each department giving them the ability to specify their own content and put their own content. It's, that's just kind of the way of the future and what we've been seeing in the last several years. It looks great, like it's like the mayor said, night and day for what we currently have.
Council have any other comments or questions?
Once this is fully launched, which should be hopefully by um the end of the month, is what I've been told. Once this fully launches, then um I'm currently working with the our vendor to also um put together a mobile app. So we've also purchased a mobile app that goes with this, that'll be a friendly, user friendly on uh different types of mobile devices.
Pretty cool. I like that.
One more thing, that existing user accounts will automatically transfer into new website. Will people have to go in and create a new account?
Civic plus user accounts could, because we do have civic plus user accounts where people have subscribed to agendas and they subscribe to our subscribe to our press releases and news flashes. No, they will not have to recreate new accounts.
All transferred to the new website.
Correct.
Moving on to items from the council. Council, you guys, do you ladies and gentlemen have any items you would like to bring up for discussion?
Yes, absolutely. One thing that's very important, I think. With the time and this beautiful building we're sitting in now, our nice, beautiful fire station, pretty semi updated police station, I think it's time to start the initial conversations about a new city hall and or a extensively remodeled and renovated city hall. I think it's small, old and antiquated. It's underwhelming and obviously we talk about the tech issues currently. So maybe it's time to start reaching out for potential funding. Whatever we need to do, whether it be a whole addition to the complex, whether we move the library somewhere else, put a whole new building right there, I don't know, but it's time. That building is far beyond what it was intended for, for the city of our size. So I think it's time to start the conversation about a new or much uh more user friendly to the community and to the staff city hall.
Thank you. That's the the dream killer right there. How do we pay for it, right? Any comments, Alex?
It, I don't want to kill the dream. I mean, it is a new that is new to the city. I mean, I I don't know that 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 building is all that functional. It's it's old. Um I mean, it, there there's typically a process when when cities looking into building a new facility. I mean, if if there's a desire from the council, we can begin to to think about what that process might look like. Typically, you'll bring on, you know, some outside consulting service to to look at on a program level, meaning how much square foot footage you need for each particular function. So you really start the design on a program level. Then, once you have that programmatic level design, you look at, well, is it staying in the same location? Is it moving to some other location? So you might identify potential sites to move a new city hall to. Then you start trying to figure out the cost of of the city hall. And, you know, develop some funding options for a city hall. That's all packaged nicely in a in a report. Then you talk about what the next steps are. So um if there's a desire amongst the council to do that, we'd probably want to plug some funding in the budget to do that. But it's, you know, certainly something we could undertake.
Yeah, I believe it's just the very initial steps, in my opinion, to start now. As we continue to growth from it as a city, both in population, services, development, everybody's need new staff. If we continue to add new staff and we have nowhere to house them, that's not going to work. So it's got to start somewhere. I think now's the time for it to start the conversation at least. And maybe we have the next several months to figure out what type of funding we could put in the budget just to start the the process.
More questions, counsel?
I concur with you. Maybe we probably should do something about city hall. I think what's really important is the communication that we have with the general public. You know, today's a pretty important meeting of sorts. And we have two people online, two people in the uh audience here. And I know with my own, my own family and the people that I work with that live within the city of Series, if it wasn't for me, they wouldn't know anything about this. And there's so many things that go on with the recreation program that somehow or another, we need to communicate with the people in Series. You know, we, we, everybody gets a utility bill. Somehow or another, we need to put something together. The the webpage is great, uh but not everybody does webpage site stuff. So I I think we need to really improve the communication to the citizens of Series. And not just about council meeting, not just about planning commission things, but just general information to let them know that we are doing things for the betterment of our city. And I, I, I don't have the answer, but we need to work on that.
I'll I have a suggestion. Maybe we can do something that comes from the city, from all the department heads. Monthly, we'll put out kind of like a a citywide news flash. And then if we want to consider that being in a print form somehow, somehow, because he's right. There's not a lot of folks that actually go online. I understand there's still a portion, a part of our citizens that don't use websites or apps. But I mean, what we can try to find different avenues to try to do better at promoting everything that we're doing at the city because there's so many great things that we're doing right now and we just want to get the word out. I think that's a good idea.
Uh absolutely a good idea. I I will say this is four more people than I've usually seen at other goal setting workshops and other places I've been. So this is a high level part. This is a, it's not bad for a session like this, but we, I think we can do better. Um and that that is certainly in line with uh the strategic plan to uh increase community engagement. I think the websites are a good start. I think um better use of or more use of social media, potentially a monthly newsletter that we might be able to put together. But again, that is certainly in line with the strategic plan. And we already do have direction and guidance from council, previous councils to do that. So I think we could certainly enhance those efforts.
You know, social media, obviously, in the future is the way to go. But social media is also, as somebody that worked in marketing every day, has made it more difficult than ever to get information out. And people probably look at that, that or listen to that comment and say, that's crazy, social media is everywhere. But there's five thousand different ways to get it out on social media. There's seldom ever a one stop shop to get things out. If you want to get stuff to a certain demographic, you got to use this social media. If you want to get to another one, this social media, it's, it's very, it's made it very difficult. Twenty five, thirty years ago, we put something in Modesto being the courier, everybody saw it. It's, it's tough now to get information out. And like Jim said, yeah, some people don't use social media, some people don't use the website, and some people don't read anything on paper. So maybe there's other cities or other organizations around the the region that have kind of figured that out on how to do that. I know at the Sheriff's Office, we hired a full time social media director. She handles every part of our marketing and different social media aspects, including website stuff, social media, print. But I, we probably don't have to reinvent the wheel if we can find somebody, maybe even a little larger than us that are already doing it. But literally, social media has made getting information out so difficult because there's so many different avenues and so many different social media platforms. You would think it's easier, but it's not. It's much more difficult. So definitely agree with Councilman here that says, you know, everybody, every, one thing doesn't work for everybody anymore. And we need to figure out a comprehensive plan to to get it out. Because it's not fair to the citizens that don't use whatever aspect of of the communication that we use.
And we Mike check. We still have the opportunity that we do have a a program right now where we can utilize college students as an apprenticeship program that we can maybe give them a task that to help us with the marketing. You know, leaving some of the workload. But I agree with the both of the council member and vice mayor. Looking at the flow, the way this meeting, I I have some, I have more more suggestions and Mike has questions. So um I'll start off with the cannabis revenue study. I'm I'm looking for a consideration in a tax, in a cannabis tax revenue study where we may be losing some potential revenue in tax from cannabis. It could potentially impact positively in our funding for fire, police, parks and recreation. Looking, looking for uh consensus from the council if they would be interested in something like that. I would imagine it would be a presentation of some sort and we'll have to bring that to the council. Another one that I have is uh the idea of tackling on homelessness. So there's a possibility we can do this the way that the way this the city and the council uh would like to move forward with this. Having a designated outreach worker, the services, uh the services that the counties provide, uh they have an access center, mental health services and a shelter. Uh there, they have an outreach team that processes requests for assistance with making contact with individuals, homelessness and encampments. Outreach team officer assistance and resources to those in in the encampment. They partner with cities to assist with identifying the homeless in the area and offering them resources. The county could partner with the city and the city could have a designated outreach worker that can work with PD and court enforcement. The request is to begin with a presentation to the council uh from the county and also looking for consensus. Counsel, another one's more like a more of a question. When we are going to open up River Bluff, that's kind of like my, one of my biggest things that I believe is, I think it's really important that we do open up River Bluff. And I know we had a couple of answers last time. Do you have any idea when we will be opening up River Bluff? Is there, what are the setbacks, I guess, is my my question? Alex, do you have any any answers on that?
I I would just say, when when we, when do we think it's going to open, Sam?
Okay, so you're you're thinking about kind of letting it flow and and have the wayfinding signs and so we can do a grand opening with Parks and Rec? Okay. Hold on, let me pass to the microphone so that that way um
Yeah, like uh most likely, yeah, we are working with the dental engineering to design this sign, wayfinding signs for uh for this project. Once those signs are in, uh part part of it is we need to control the uh the traffic flow and to control the speed limit uh down at the local bluff because we don't want to cause any because, you know, this is an unpaved section, it's just a uh crush rock that is along the path. So we don't want to create any dust, we can minimize dust control. So we need to uh think about the the speed limit and also having the signs in to protect the uh the people from going to certain areas of the park.
Okay, and uh my next comment, and it's not about River Bluff, but it might, it might be in relation to it. I know the city of Modesto created a Parks Ranger program. If the council would be interested in in trying to either contract with the city of Modesto or maybe creating our own parks program. We have thirteen parks right now and then we'll be having two brand new parks, including River Bluff. I think it would be very interesting to see if there's some research we can conduct and see if that would be something that the city of Series, to see if it would actually even work in our city. So if the council can think about that one. Another small one is the the annual celebration of of Series. If it's something that the council would be interested in, um every year, we could possibly be doing a celebration on our birthday. Or we can just stick with what we did before, we just kind of do uh the main uh kind of celebration, whether it's a ten year or whatnot. So if that's something that the city, the council would be interested in, that'd be really great. I don't know if anybody has any comments on that. Obviously, it all comes down to budget. So this is the reason why I'm bringing these things up, because we would have to make a decision whether we want to fund something like that. Another thing is uh considering the idea of having a Fourth of July uh fire celebration with fireworks, but instead of with actual fireworks, because that's a huge nuisance in the city of Series, we can look into a drone display. I don't know if anybody's ever seen that on YouTube, but obviously those, that's not, there's, those are not real fireworks, but they're pretty fascinating. If you guys have a chance to look on YouTube and check out those drone displays, they're they're pretty awesome. Obviously, at the end of the day, what would that cost us? Another thing that I'm I'm very interested in in considering is more funding for National Night Out. I know Ms. Rhino has been the lead in that and I think that was a very, very interesting event that I went to this year. I think you guys I think you guys do a great job. And if we can find any other ways to fund, more funding for that, to expand on that event, I think that would be great as well. We did cover Love Series earlier, so I won't get into that. The next one that I'm, I have this idea that we look into how we can designate landmarks in the city of Series. That would also create the opportunity to, to receive grants from the federal government to improve those locations. If we decide to move forward with this, uh, so that we can get some community and engagement on that and see what we can find. If there's any, uh, locations, parks or whatnot to dedicate as landmarks. That would most definitely help with, uh, trying to find funding for those parks. Last but not least, Cinco de Mayo celebration participation. South Modesto Business United is interested in talks with having the city of Series and participating, participating in their annual event. If the council was on board, they want to begin, uh, on the side of Series where, where the Crow's Landing Flea Market is, which is called El Matito. And they would love for the city of Series to participate in that in each way possible. So with that, I bring it back to council. You guys have any questions or comments?
Correct me if I'm wrong on the Cinco de Mayo thing. They just, they would like to start their parade at the flea market and, and it goes north all the way down. But they have to get the okay because it's in Series.
Exactly. That's pretty much.
That's basically it. It's the same weekend as street parade.
Yeah. Same weekend as the street parade. They're very excited.
To me.
I mean, I don't know exactly what they're looking for. I mean, on the, on the smaller scale, maybe possibly, uh, maybe some traffic kind of, you know, where we have one officer there to mitigate traffic. Or maybe the county could even help us with that if they're.
Yeah, we would definitely have to have the PD involved. But that's really, I think their only intention is starting the, their Cinco de Mayo parade at the flea market and continuing north all the way down Crow's Landing Road. Nothing more than that.
Yeah. And I don't think it's anything more than that. They're, they're really excited the city of Series is even considering something like this. I think that it's very important that we participate, especially with the, even though the address says Modesto. I, we all know that this technically is Series. Any other questions, council? And with that, break back to Alex. Oh, you do? Sorry, go ahead.
I'd like to add something. Here, and this, I'm not sure who's responsible. I know that Diane and her staff worked hard to get the agenda out. And sometimes, as we all know, it's after five o'clock. I'm, I'm guessing that part of that issue is staff not getting her the information. I, I think it's important that not only the council members have it a little earlier than, you know, in the evening on Wednesday night, but also the city citizens have access. I would like to suggest somehow it'd be done by 10 o'clock Wednesday morning. And I, I, I know it's about in, information coming to. I don't know if that requires a resolution or what, but it is, must be aggravating for her, for her department. They're, you know, they're waiting and waiting and waiting and waiting. That's my suggestion. Somehow or another, who's ever responsible, city manager, to get her the information and somehow get it through, you know, Tuesday afternoon, Wednesday afternoon. That's it.
I have one comment on that. You know, uh, uh, Councilmember Casey, I understand where you're coming from. But I will say that 10 years ago, we used to get it Friday night. I mean, when I, 10 years ago, we got it Friday at four o'clock. And you know, now getting it a Wednesday or even Thursday morning is a lot better than four o'clock on Friday night. You know, uh, I don't know how difficult it is to get it done on Tuesday night or, or anything like that. But I do appreciate getting it way before Friday at four o'clock. So, uh, and I know that's a difficult task. So.
Diane, is there something we could do as a council to help you gather that information? If it is an issue, can we set time constraints, like city departments have to have it due by X number of time or whatever?
Vice Mayor, there, we have a schedule of when items are due. So I, I don't see that it's been an issue where departments submit items well, well ahead of the game. Brown Act requires 72-hour notice to the public to have the packet. And by having it on Wednesday, we're ahead of the deadline already.
I, I mean, my, my only comment is it, it's, it's oftentimes like herding cats. Unfortunately, agenda production, always lots of moving parts. Always lots of moving parts. And we, we do our best to get it out on Wednesdays. Um, and we can see if there's any fine tuning we can even further do to maybe get that out a little bit, a little bit sooner.
Okay. If there's any more questions from the council or Alex, I'd like to open it up to the public. Hope you okay with that. We good?
Yes.
Okay. I'll go ahead and start off with any public comment with persons that are here at the Dais. Would you like to, anybody here? Mr. Warren, would you like to make a comment? And thank you, Mr. Warren, for being here patiently with us and.
Well, it's good afternoon, council.
Thank you.
Lots of, uh, work was done here this morning, this afternoon. Hopefully you'll be a little patient and maybe give me a little more than five minutes because you covered a lot of things that I do have to touch on a few. And, um, and then make a comment about, uh, the upcoming budget going forward. And I'll start with that. It's to throw out some ideas to council, which will involve all the departments and how the city probably is going to function going forward. I was going to ask, what's the, does, does the average city employee, the city worker? Do they make $27 an hour at, at least top step?
Christina, can you put 10 minutes on the timer?
The average employee be at that?
Add nine more minutes to it.
Pay level?
Go ahead, Mr. Warren. Sorry about that.
And the reason I ask that question, because that figure was brought up in a local newspaper as being what the average wage for a person to sustain life. Be a livable wage here in the valley is $27 an hour. With a 2,000-hour work year being the average, that's $54,000 a year as a livable wage. And I don't think any employee working in our city, at least at their top step level, should earn less than that. Which ties into the, to the kind of the budget process because the county, I guess, and the cities are working together to share the property tax split where before it was 70/30 and now it's going forward to be 50/50. And that's going to add quite a bit of funding to the city of Series budget. Maybe as much as a million dollars or more a year. And looking at how to sustain our new code enforcement people that we want to hire, possibly. Uh, Councilman Silveira mentioned grants and things like that. Sometimes employees couldn't be maintained, but you have to find funding to maintain those people going forward. And I think some of those dollars that we're going to get back from the county that we didn't receive is going to enable the city to do that and possibly hire two or three more people to help with our park system. And maybe someone over in, in Diane's department to help with her. Now that's, that's a lot of dollars and doing a little figuring. Five employees at that $54,000 a year would probably cost over $500,000, which would be half of maybe that money they're just going to get back. And still leave some funding in there for some other projects. So just something to think about. Commenting on the food vendor project and code enforcement. Here last summer, a vendor appeared over here at the park at Semara. And it was a strange van, but it was dispensing food and selling food. And there was a problem getting anybody to respond to find out what was going on. It was in the middle of the week. And lack of communication when the person did arrive there. The comment was, well, we're just here delivering some food. And then the person that was responsible drove off and didn't require him to leave, just left him there. They had a tent set up. They had a stove out there. They were cooking food and doing all the things they weren't supposed to do right next to the stool. And they're not supposed to be there either. So that needs to be fixed. And that's part of that food vendor program. The cupcake lady was going all over the place and no one would even speak to her after, until after a big fuss was made. The people that are in that program are not going by the rules. And nothing is being done to enforce those rules that they're supposed to go by. Well, I don't think that program is working the way it should. And it bears considerable investigation. Fire truck replacements were talked about when the money was borrowed to buy the new fire apparatus. And that was a couple of years ago. Mr. Klein is correct on that. And that's part of the communication problem. Discussions are made, but there's no follow-up on it. On the day of those purchases and when a city is paying back that loan, they need a comparable amount to go into a special fund, as Mr. Klein refers to, to buy those fire trucks 10 years down the road. If it takes 10 years to pay off the loan, you got to have this equal amount of money going in to the savings plan so you can buy that apparatus down the road. And it's going to cost more than $2 million in 10 years because the cost of building that stuff is probably going to go sky high. So that needs to be in that thought process. But yes, those discussions were at council, but there's no follow-up on it. There needs to be a better way to make sure that there is follow-up and that those things are put in place. Because we've been paying the loan for a couple of years, I think, but there's no matching funds for the new equipment. Employee recognition is a grand, is a grand program. I worked for the state for 32 years and there was a recognition program there. There was also a safety award that the employees wore. We wore it on our name tags and you had stars that it said five years of safety, 25 years of safety, things like that. And employees appreciate that sort of thing. We picked from a catalog. There was funds for that that were allocated by the state with the 25 years and, and retirement. And I was able to pick a couple of things in my career as well as my safety badge. Those are important recognitions and employees should be afforded that. The fire department contract has saved the city, what, $740,000? And I'm not sure if those savings can be shifted over into the capital improvements section where health and welfare programs and the water rescue, personal protection, equipment can be purchased with that money that was saved. So I'm not sure if that's something that might be considered. So my thought in the savings that is going to come back to us is that two or three employees could be hired for the parks. People to take care of our parks and continue with the two employees that are going to be added to code enforcement eventually. And Diane's department and possibly a code enforcement supervisor that would be able to make the program mesh well with, with its current placement. So please give those things, uh, some thought and thank you for letting me speak this afternoon.
Thank you very much. I think Mike has a question.
No, but I, I'd like to address two of the items that Mr. Warner brought up. The adjusted revenue sharing for Stanislaus County. That's not finalized yet. You know, I've had my discussion with the city manager when I met with him about this. And what I've sort of asked him to look into the background would be what's it going to be at a cost? We had a, an MOU with Stanislaus County for their, uh, animal shelter. And it was in place for a number of years. It's out there off of Crow's Landing Road. And then all of a sudden, the expenditures for them had risen. So they came to us for an adjustment on, on fees because of that. So if they take out of their coffers and give it to us, what's it going to do as far as affecting some of the MOUs that we have with county? Are we going to have to start paying more and more for services? So those are the things we need to look at before we turn around and spend that extra money as far as revenue sharing. Because there could be a cost on the other end because they're losing the revenue. So that's the first thing. And I had, I had a, a discussion with the city manager on that to see what the possibilities are that's going to affect. Uh, as far as the fire, we had a program in place when we borrowed the money. Something that, uh, I had numerous discuss, discussions with Chief Weiss when he was here about our strike teams and how we got our money back and followed up with it. And out of the fire chiefs that we had here, he understood what, what I was talking about. He did his homework. He brought it to the thing. We, as a council, says we need to put that money back into the fire service. Correct me if I'm wrong. And that's how we were going to go about, um, funding fire apparatus in the future. But now with us contracted to the city of Modesto, if they go to strike teams, we have to look at what that adjustment's going to be because now the city of Series will only be, be reimbursed for our equipment usage and not the personnel usage because that would go to the Modesto. So those are the things that we need to look at and address and how we're going to, how we're going to do that. Because we do leave, we do lose that one, one source of revenue. So, uh, I'm just following up with, you know, because I do agree with your concerns. But those are the things that I had been working on with, with Alex and, and that. So, uh, me personally, I, I have addressed those and I think they're valid points. And it gets, gets it back out there where everybody's aware of it. And, and hopefully we can, we can, in 10 years, we don't have to worry about borrowing money again.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have anybody else in the public that would like to speak? No sir. Do we have anybody online who would like to speak? I know Rosalinda, you had your hand up earlier. Would you like to speak? Raise your hand. Hi, Rosalinda.
Thank you. I'm muted. Thank you. I just wanted to touch, because I am on the Measure H and we had that same question regarding the uses for the contract. When we reviewed the ordinance, it did state it was in there. But I know our main thing that we were talking about during the recent Measure H meeting was wanting to make sure they had the adequate supplies because that is covered under the city, under Measure H. And we had a long conversation with Weiss. But I just wanted to touch bases that, um, we do have that funding. There was, she discussed some of the overage that we have with Measure H with the, again, we don't know if it's going to be permanent or just was like she said, the stimulus, extra stimulus money that was given out. So we got some extra tax dollars. But that was just what I wanted to touch bases on. We did review the ordinance as well during the Measure H meeting recently, just to confirm that it is allowed under the ordinance.
Thank you very much. Anybody else on Zoom that would like to speak? Please raise your hand now. Okay. Doesn't look like anybody else on Zoom would like to speak. Okay. We're now closing Citizens Communications. Unless there's any other comments or questions, I believe we are done. Alex?
Sorry, I was just jotting down some notes. Believe so, uh, unless there's other comments, questions.
I'll just make one comment. Thank you, everybody for being here. This is probably, I had a better experience this time than the last time. I liked the flow of this meeting. Thank you very much, everyone, and you guys enjoy your day.
Thank you.
He's adjourned.